Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 7 meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. For our questions while we're working out, this is the Councilor.
Councilmember Dish?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Malik?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Ghaziadwa?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Iyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Cornell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May the motion, please, to approve the agenda move by. Councilmember Iyer seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion of the agenda. All in favor? All opposed? The agenda is approved. Do you have communications today from our city administrator?
No, Mayor.
We have the pleasure of a number of introductions today. First, with respect to our Juneteenth event, our local branch of the NAACP. Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lynn Landy and member of the Ann Arbor Branch of the NAACP and tri-chair of this year's celebration of Juneteenth on June 14th. And my other two legs of this three-legged stool are Lucille Kirk-Malcolm and Mary Hall Times. So the three of us are leading the Juneteenth celebration with a great team of people behind us. So we are very pleased to be with you this evening and to share with you a little bit about Juneteenth and encourage you to join in this celebration. So probably many of you know this, but Juneteenth is the name given to the date, June 19th, in 1865, when the enslaved people in Galveston, Texas received word the Civil War was over, two years after Abraham Lincoln had done the Emancipation Proclamation. Took a long time for word to get there. The city of Ann Arbor, on May 17, 2021, unanimously approved that Juneteenth would be a city holiday. And later in 2021, President Biden declared Juneteenth a federal holiday. The Ann Arbor Branch of NAACP has observed Juneteenth for 31 years. This is a community-wide celebration of freedom and a call to continue to work for social justice. The city of Ann Arbor has partnered with us, providing both support and participation. The city has reserved Wheeler Park on June 14th for the site of Juneteenth and will provide security and free parking. And Mayor Chris Taylor will be leading the Freedom Walk from Fuller Park to Wheeler Park to set off the celebration. We invite you all to come. There will be food and ice cream treats, music, entertainment, games for children, a cakewalk, and scholarship recipients reading their winning essays, and old-fashioned community gathering fair with modern touches. There also will be multiple vendors selling beautiful, handcrafted jewelry and clothing, and nonprofits with information on their programs and services. And one of my favorites is sitting with the elders as they visit with old friends and tell stories. The city has been generous in supporting this special day. We ask only one more thing, and that is that you will support Juneteenth by publicizing this event on the Ann Arbor City webpage and announcing it as the big day draws near. We hope to see you at Wheeler Park on Saturday, June 14th, from noon to 6:00 p.m. Admission is free to all, and it will be a great day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I call on William or Andre? This is our president, Andre Watson, and our newly-retired president, William Hampton, whom you all know.
I promise not to take as much time as Lynn. I've been instructed to speak only 90 seconds, so I'm going to do that. I think it is significant to mention that the Ann Arbor NAACP's Juneteenth, it's the second-oldest in the state of Michigan, second only to Lansing by one year. And it's going to get better and better as we move forward because this guy right here, Andre Watson, is going to be the best president in the history of NAACP nationwide.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Most of you know me. Good to see you all. As you guys are learning, I'm sure in your leadership position as our democracy goes through the shakes and rattles that they're going through, sometimes the job finds you when you're not looking. But I am looking forward to supporting NAACP in the community. And as Lynn mentioned, we hope that you all come out. We're very excited about Juneteenth and the celebration. And I think and I pray that we've all learned the lessons of being passive about opportunities to create community, being active, come out and learn, being a part-practicing the democracy that may be challenged now. And I hope everybody is really energized, and not just you all as leaders, but definitely you all as leaders, but everyday citizens, come out and display what Ann Arbor is about. And I hope and pray that the anxieties that most of us are experiencing now can be processed through with real practice. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, thank you very much, our next introduction is from the indomitable executive director of the Downtown Development Authority, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity of bringing you all my March presentation this evening, so thank you for that. So next Thursday, DDA has a work session with city council where we will be discussing our new development plan. Specifically, what we're going to be looking for from council is direction. We will be bringing you recommendations on our boundary, we'll be bringing you recommendations on our TIF capture, which in turn will influence the projects and the potential projects and programs that we can take on in this long-range plan. So just to step back, DDA, we started work on this development plan back in the summer of 2023, and we started by doing peer research and having a lot of conversations with our colleagues at the city. We took 2024, the focus there was on the multiple planning efforts that were underway in our downtown, some of which are still underway, and also doing public engagement. So here we are in 2025, the foundation of our plan is complete, and we now need direction from council to bring you a plan for consideration in August that you are comfortable with. So our boundary determines where we can do our work. Our finance plan estimates the revenue, which tells us how much money we have to do that work, which in turn informs those projects and programs. So typically, this equation would work, boundary plus revenue gives us capacity, gives us our projects and programs. However, in this case, that equation may work in reverse, where some of the projects and programs that we share with you next Thursday may drive your decision on our boundary and our TIF capture. So we'll start with boundary. I know I've shared this slide previously, but I thought it is worth repeating. On the left, that is the DDA's boundary. It is 67 blocks of our downtown. It was established over 43 years ago. It has never changed. Here in Ann Arbor, it is just not common for us to talk about our DDA expanding. It is more common in other communities, and we can look to Grand Rapids as a great example of a DDA that has expanded 16 times since 1980. Basically, they're responding to an evolving downtown. So what would an outcome be for the Ann Arbor DDA's boundary to expand? Basically, it expands the area where we can work, and it gives us the opportunity to respond to a downtown that we know is evolving. So we began looking at our boundary with a broad lens, keeping in mind that our boundary has to be contiguous. So we began by looking at development that is already happening, just adjacent to our current borders, and that brings additional amenity needs. We looked at potential projects that expand beyond our current boundaries. We looked at underground utility needs, and we looked at future land use. So from there, we refined that area to what you see on the screen. We've got two areas to the north and three areas to the south, and I apologize, one B should also be shaded blue. But basically, what we did was we took the areas that had the highest identified need and put that in our recommendation. So the approval process for a boundary expansion, council gets to decide the DDA's boundary. Depending on the direction that we get from council, we will include in our plan that boundary. It's important to note that with expansion areas, our taxing authority partners do have the option of opting out. So that does mean less revenue if they chose to opt out. However, it doesn't impact where we can invest. Should council not be interested in the DDA expanding its boundary, no change will occur. Our plan will include our current boundary. So now we're going to move on to our TIF capture. We will go over this in a lot more detail next Thursday, but I kind of wanted to give a high-level teaser on some of these slides. So this is a standard TIF model. This is what is used in most communities across Michigan. We did find two communities that use a different model for TIF capture, Ann Arbor being one. But basically, that orange rectangle at the bottom, that is the base that taxing the city and the other taxing units retain, and that blue area above the base is the revenue that a DDA would capture to make investment in downtown. So the Ann Arbor model is much different, and we'll start at the bottom. So you can see where with the orange rectangle, in addition to the base in Ann Arbor, taxing units also capture inflation. DDA does not capture inflation. But most significantly, in 2017, a 3.5% cap was placed on the DDA's growth. And you can see where our revenue line flattens over time. And that orange triangle above that blue section, that is the, that represents the TIF capture that goes back and is distributed amongst the city and the other taxing units. So with this model, the DDA is limited at both the bottom and the top. So Grand Rapids is the other community we found that does not use that standard TIF model. They use a gain-share model. And I'll just briefly walk through this. So in 2018, they established a 90-10 split. So the Grand Rapids DDA receives 90% of the TIF capture, the other taxing units at 10%. They then take a stepped approach. So every five years, that amount that goes back to the other taxing authority units increases, and it maxes out at 25%. So they max out at a 75-25 split. So basically, as values go up in downtown Grand Rapids, everybody benefits. It gives the Grand Rapids DDA the ability to make the investments it needs to make. So what we will be proposing to council is a gain-share model, similar to Grand Rapids, with a little, a few caveats. So it's important to note, in FY '26, that amount that goes back to the other taxing authority, so that orange triangle at the top of the graph, will be at about 28% of the total TIF capture. So what we would be suggesting is we lock in at a 70-30 split, so that tax, the other, city and the other taxing units would receive 30% of the TIF capture throughout the life of the plan, and the DDA would receive 70% of the capture. So what would the outcomes be should our TIF cap be adjusted? It would allow us to expand the work that we do. Specifically, it would allow us to establish a downtown service team. We could fund more projects. We could fund larger-scale projects, and basically maintain areas within our boundary to a higher degree. The approval process, when the TIF cap was put in place back in, it was actually put in place in 2013, was implemented in 2017. At that time, it was a change to city code. State statute has changed since then, so if there is interest from council in making an adjustment, we would work with city finance and legal on the proper mechanism to make that change. So now on to projects and programs. So next Thursday, we're going to be coming to you with four scenarios. Those scenarios will range from a boundary expansion and a TIF cap adjustment all the way to status quo, where nothing will change. Within each of those scenarios, we will have project lists, so you can see what would be accomplished under each scenario. Again, the decision is council's, and we are ready to expand or contract our work depending on your desires. So with that, I look forward to seeing you all next Thursday. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Finally, rounding out the introductions, we have a presentation from Chair Carter of our Independent Community Police Oversight Commission. Chair Carter, you have a call.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Administrator DeHomi, members of council, Madam Clerk. Good evening. You have in front of you, I think, a copy of the ICPOC 2024 report. And we got it out, I think, as quickly as we could, and I hope you will take some time and take a look at it. At the beginning, you'll see our mission is the same as in last year's report, but we do, we show a number of things that we have done last year. And just as an aside, there's a picture there of our support for the Juneteenth. And we have Mayor and Councilperson Medina is there at our table, and we got a lot of information out at that time. I'd like you, if you would, please just turn to page 5 real quickly in the report. We quoted from the poet Maya Angelou in the report, and she said, "You know, people will forget what you say to them, and they'll forget what you do for them, but they will never forget how you made them feel." When we look at the complaints that we've had, the largest percentage, as you can see in both of the pie charts there, both from 2023 and 2024, the largest percentage was type III complaints, and that includes when the people complain, they use adjectives such as rude, unprofessional, aggressive, humiliated, berated, sarcastic, profanity, inappropriate. We are working, and Chief Anderson has worked with us. We are very happy with our relationship with the chief. But, you know, it's hard to change people. And, but that is something that we hope we can sort of tamp down that kind of complaints as we, as we look at how our police officers are being trained. The chief has set up a training for ICPOC, so we can see what training the officers receive, and that's going to be a three-hour training on April 21st. So we're looking forward to that. We also, and I mentioned this last time, I think our co, our vice chair was here last time, we are having our first annual Jude Walton Memorial Symposium, Social Justice Symposium. That's going to be May 21st, and you'll be getting more information about that. We expect to have some very powerful speakers to come in and open it up for community discussion. So hopefully, many of you will join us for that. I think also, before I leave the report, you'll also see that we listed several recommendations that we had made to the police department in 2023, and we're just happy to see that some of them have been implemented. And one of them that we are most happy about, you know, we had so many complaints. When a police officer pulls me over in my car, they just say, "Give me your license and registration." And you say, "Well, why was I stopped?" And "Give me your license and registration." We've had, we had a lot of complaints like that. Well, there's a new policy, as we understand it now, and police officers are directed, when they make a traffic stop, to introduce themselves and explain the reason for the stop. So hopefully, that, the policy is there, and if we don't get any complaints about it, we'll, we'll see that hopefully it's being implemented. So that is all that I have for you this evening, unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now come to public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council in the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker is Ken Garber.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Nice to see you all again. Ken Garber, Second Ward. I'm here about the new DTE gas franchise. Two years ago, staff told you this, quote, "We see upcoming franchise discussions as an opportunity to provide residents with energy choices that are safe, healthy, affordable, and clean by exploring options that allow us to heat our homes and businesses with clean, renewable, and affordable energy." This new franchise does little of that. There is an energy efficiency pilot. DTE will bid on Network Geothermal at Bryant and perhaps one other site, some money for work of training, coordination with the city on some but not all DTE gas line digs, a joint panel to devise future work plans, regular meetings to discuss things, some new reporting, and a yearly meeting with the community. That's about it. Here's just some of what's missing. There's no project, pilot or otherwise, for residential conversion to heat pumps. The A20 goal, quote, "By 2030, 30% of owner-occupied homes and 25% of rental properties have fully electrified," end quote. We're probably around 1% now. DTE should help with that. It gives rebates for EV purchases. Why not for heat pumps? Two years ago, I suggested free home electrification consultations, like DTE's current free home energy visits. I don't see that here either. Also, $500 heat pump installation rebate, rebate like DTE's current EV charger rebate. That's not here either. There is also no franchise fee. These are legal in Michigan if both parties agree. The fee appears on customer utility bills and goes to the city. We could use it to finance projects to get off gas, like Network Geothermal. And there's nothing about limiting gas hookups to new construction. According to A20, such hookups should have ended in 2022. Maybe we can't stop them, but we can at least set a goal. Two years ago, excuse me, yeah, at that time, staff committed to talking to other providers besides DTE, quote, "To make sure that Ann Arborites get the best deal," unquote. Let's hear more about those non-DTE discussions before signing off on this deal. Maybe this is the most we can get from DTE. If so, we're on our own getting rid of gas, and we need a plan for that. For sure, this isn't it. We, the public, just heard about this five days ago, and that notice is insufficient, in my opinion. I think this first reading should be delayed so that the community can better digest this and that Energy Commission can review it. So, yeah, obviously, I'm not happy with the new franchise, but I think we should definitely discuss it more, and if it's the best we can do, so be it. But then we have to find another path forward in terms of gas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brandon Dimchoff. I live in Larrytown in the Fourth Ward. I'm here today to speak about DC 5. I'm going to speak about it generally in a second, but I want to get the most, my most important request out first. Please amend this to convert the height limit to stories instead of feet. 35 feet may limit creative uses of three-story buildings, such as first-floor retail, that we would really like to encourage. Stories is a more flexible measure and is more appropriate for a comprehensive planning document. Please leave feet to the UDC. I still think that three stories is too short for my preference, and if I were in your seats, I would probably vote no as a result, but I understand there's a reasonable policy disagreement here. Look at these lovely three-story or four-story townhomes in the south end of Boston. I really think those ought to be legal to build anywhere in the city. I don't see a reason to detract, direct Planning Commission to discourage this sort of construction. All that being said, the reason we're even having this conversation tonight is because anti-housing activists have been spreading fear and misinformation about the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the process around it, which has caused confusion in the community. These anti-housing activists have falsely claimed that there has been insufficient notice and insufficient resident feedback, but these same activists have been publicly encouraging their fellow residents to voice their opposition to increasing housing supply via this comprehensive planning process since at least 2023. These activists have been fully aware of the long overdue planning process, which has been going on for years. The city has sent out mailers, built websites, put up signs, had thousands of survey participants, and has had dozens of meetings, most of them open to the public. There has been ample engagement. The results are that Ann Arborites broadly support adding more housing in all neighborhoods to solve the housing crisis. I understand that there is a very vocal minority with an extraordinary amount of free time on their hands that is opposed to any positive change to our comprehensive plan and zoning codes that could possibly increase density. These same out-of-touch activists recently lost their seats on council and lost misinformation-laden campaigns to amend the city charter by a three-to-one margin. Their ideas are unpopular, and you should not be afraid to do what is right. The majority of us who understand that we have to solve the housing crisis will have your backs. And as Tim Wall said about, about political capital, "You win elections to burn capital and improve lives." Sure, don't burn it unnecessarily, but let's make Ann Arbor a better and more welcoming place for ourselves and our neighbors. Future Ann Arborites will thank you for your vision. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brent Henderson.
I understand that there is a very vocal minority with an extraordinary amount of free time on their hands that is opposed to any positive change to our comprehensive plan and zoning codes that could possibly increase density. These same out-of-touch activists recently lost their seats on council and lost misinformation-laden campaigns to amend the city charter by a three-to-one margin. Their ideas are unpopular, and you should not be afraid to do what is right. The majority of us who understand that we have to solve the housing crisis will have your backs. And as Tim Wall said about about political capital, you win elections to burn capital and improve lives. Sure, don't burn it unnecessarily, but let's make Ann Arbor a better and more welcoming place for ourselves and our neighbors. Future Ann Arborites will thank you for your vision. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brent Henderson.
Brent Henderson, Third Ward. This is going to be the polar opposite of what you just heard. When you look at this comprehensive plan, what you see right away is that they can, the developers can remove trees without any consideration. They don't have to provide parking. They don't have to be concerned about water runoff. They, all the traditional setbacks are waived. Basically, it's a developer's dream. They can do just about anything they want. Anything they want, it's in this plan. So it's no surprise that the head of the Planning Commission is a developer. The developers are going to make a lot of money from this, especially with all these requirements being waived. And what do we get? We're going to get a lot of old houses torn down. We're going to get neighborhoods destroyed. And the profits, the profits are going to go outside of Ann Arbor, outside of our state. A friend of mine is actually a developer in another city. He got started in 1975. So I sent him the basics of this plan, and he just couldn't believe it. He said, in 50 years in the business, he could not believe all the things that are waived and shoved aside. He even wonders if it's legal, given the fact that it yanks the rug out from under everybody that owns a home in this town. So I think we know where this is going to go. You're going to make a few very, very minor changes and then jam it down our throats. That's how this is going to work. In some kind of twisted logic, you think you're creating something, but you're not. You're destroying homes. You're destroying neighborhoods. And we're just going to get more congestion. That's what the comprehensive plan is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Henderson.
She'll join us via Zoom.
Mary Henderson on Zoom. Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, my name is Mary Henderson. I'm Brent Henderson's spouse. I'm also speaking on the DC 5 proposal. I just want to review what was mentioned by the speaker just earlier to Brent. I just became aware of this proposal two weeks ago. And I had a Zoom meeting with some people this morning, about 12 people were present, and only one of the people at that meeting, people in Ann Arbor, knew about this. So the word has not gotten out. It's not something that I've known about for any, any longer than two, two weeks. I also am opposed to the elimination of single-family and duplex zoning in Ann Arbor and replacing single-family houses and duplexes with box-style apartment complexes up to four stories high. I attended last week's Planning Commission meeting via Zoom, and without exception, all of the supporters of the plan stated the reason they're in favor of the plan is because they believe it will lower the cost of housing in Ann Arbor. Not a single supporter mentioned sustainability or reduced carbon emissions or an increased tax base as a reason for their support. Yet those are the actual goals of the plan. Lower housing costs are not the intent of the comprehensive plan. Ann Arbor Planning Staff has acknowledged this, that the proposal will not create affordable housing or lower housing costs. And that's borne out by what has happened in other cities that have upzoned. So this will not create housing opportunities for lower and middle-income families. The beneficiaries of the Planning Commission's proposal are real estate developers and people connected with them. And it's not going to be the lower and middle-income families, and it's not the citizens of Ann Arbor. Lisa Dish, who's Volta City Council member and on the Planning Commission, is one of the officials who have acknowledged that the elimination of single-family and duplexed housing will not result in lowered housing costs, let alone affordable housing. She then backpedaled on her statement by saying, and I quote, "It is important to create new housing opportunities at the higher end of the market because those units draw people who can afford them and create vacancies in lower-priced housing units," end quote. So Lisa is confirming that the new housing that will be built will be, quote, "at the higher end of the market." It will be expensive housing. And it doesn't logically follow that the people in Ann Arbor who are living in less expensive housing will choose to move into the more expensive housing, freeing up their current housing.
30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. As part of the Planning Commission's community engagement and education, the Planning Commission has a responsibility to correct the misinformation that the comprehensive plan will create lower housing costs. If every single opponent of the plan said that the reason for opposition was that it proposes building 12-story high-rises in residential neighborhoods, the Planning Commission and the City Council would quickly correct us. The Planning Commission and the City Council have an obligation to correct the misinformation that the comprehensive plan will lower the cost of housing in Ann Arbor.
Time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Jevons.
Hi, I'm Lisa Jevons. I live at 1054 Martin Place. I want to talk about the proposal resolution, DC 5. The first line of DC 5 reads, "Zoning that prohibits multifamily housing." Then in parentheses, "all R1 and all R2 areas." I'm going to stop right there. This is a misrepresentation of reality. It should be struck from this resolution. As you all should know, Ann Arbor passed an accessory dwelling unit ordinance in 2016 and expanded it in 2021. This essentially ended single-family zoning in Ann Arbor already, allowing an additional dwelling unit on any R1 or R2 lot. As for the R2, this has always been duplex zoning, hence the number two. The R2 duplexes on a lot can be put on a lot as small as 5,000 square feet, and an additional unit can be added for every 2,500 square feet of lot size. If this isn't multifamily housing and zoning, I don't know what is. It is no wonder that people who live in the R1 and R2 are bristling at the label of exclusionary. According to our zoning code, these people live in multifamily zones already. Inserting pejoratives into the public discourse is not helpful. Residents are generally trying to understand what is going on. They want to participate in the fates of their neighborhoods. This rhetoric should stop and be placed with, replaced with genuine engagement. My second point has to do with the section of the resolution that mentions community consensus. The percentage of residents engaged so far accounts for a tiny, single-digit percentage of Ann Arbor's entire population, and only a percentage of those people said they wanted these specific changes. 0% of the public has seen any of these survey or feedback results in detailed form. I would like some transparency with the numbers that the city is basing these important decisions on. Why not post them on the Comprehensive Plan website? I can tell you for sure that at neighborhood meetings, residents are not expressing overwhelming consensus on this plan. They are doing the opposite. I think that is because they feel naturally resistant to this top-down approach. They were not reached out to at the start of the process in a meaningful way to lend their opinions, expertise, and ideas for growth. You have a wonderful opportunity here to build community in the planning process. Other cities have done this. So far, it seems like you have chosen an approach that people are rejecting. There is still time to write this process and bring people together. And I hope you will do it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Juskevich.
Mayor Adam Juskevich is joining us on Zoom. Adam Juskevich, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Adam Juskevich calling from the Fourth Ward. Tonight, I would like to speak to you about DC 3. But first, I would like to say just a few words about the comprehensive plan. The previous speaker, Lisa Jevons, emailed her Neighborhood Association to encourage attendance at public engagement in March of 2024, and John Godfrey was doing so as early as October of 2023. I think it's insulting to those of us who have put in the time and effort to give our feedback only for a group of fellow Ann Arborites to demand a suspension of the planning process. Follow the process like everyone else. Stop demanding special treatment, and please, stop spreading misinformation. Anyway, back to DC 3. This reaffirms the city's commitment toward Vision Zero. While I support this resolution, I have a few specific concerns. First, we have had two people killed on our streets so far this year. One was a pedestrian who died trying to cross Plymouth, and the other was a driver who died at the Jackson Pier near Weber's. We've also had serious injuries. These should be noted in a whereas clause, just as those in 2024 have been noted. Second, in light of that, you should include a whereas clause acknowledging this failure to achieve our commitment. Finally, there's the first resolved clause. This reaffirms our commitment to achieving zero serious injuries or deaths on city streets by 2025, which we have already failed to do. I suggest you strike "by 2025" and replace it with an achievable year. As written, this clause doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Overall, this resolution is necessary, but not sufficient. The resolved clauses are all things that, as far as I know, the city was already doing. If not, well, I guess that's where this resolution comes in. I hope you evaluate the city administrator accordingly. There are a couple of immediate outcomes I would like to see from this resolution. I hope to see this reaffirmation of our commitment demonstrated tonight with another item on your agenda, CA 11. Given the third resolved clause, I expect that the administrator has explained how Vision Zero is explicitly addressed and that our goals of Vision Zero and VMT reduction are central to this work. And it's, the goal of Vision Zero must be part of the contract. All transportation projects going forward, including this project, need to center Vision Zero and demand a safe systems approach to eliminating deaths and serious injuries on our streets. We need non-fatal design speeds wherever there are conflict points with vulnerable road users. Furthermore, I join others who have signed the Safety for Stadium Now petition in calling on City Council to urgently appropriate funds to reconfigure all remaining multilane segments of Stadium Boulevard and Maple Road
30 seconds.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
that, right? But unfortunately, after reflecting on this a bit, I've realized that we were not, that this resolution really is necessary. So I do encourage you to pass it, but recognize, as the previous caller said, that it is necessary, but not sufficient. And a perfect example of this is on your agenda tonight also, that is CA 11, the multilane road reconfiguration study. This effort was motivated by Vision Zero, but the actual proposal and contracts do not appear to center Vision Zero and VMT reduction as the primary goals. But also, another problem is that this is fundamentally just another year-long planning effort. Folks, we have so many plans already, it's time to start implementing them. So a number of us are circulating a petition called Safety for Stadium Now, which calls upon the city to immediately, this year, reconfigure Stadium to be a safe, not multilane route for all road users. And what we're saying is, in addition to studying this stuff on paper, let's actually do a reconfiguration as a pilot project and evaluate it in the real world. So we'll be there in a few weeks to actually deliver this petition to you. But for now, I want to explain where this came from. So talking with other folks who care about road safety, a question came up. What would it look like if we actually were committed to achieving Vision Zero anytime remotely soon?
Thirty seconds.
The city has frankly not shown us a course of action that would get us there. So we took it upon ourselves to create one, or at least to envision what a first step would look like. And so while we think our logic for picking Stadium, for picking this intervention on Stadium is sound, this kind of isn't specifically about Stadium. You should see this as an expression of frustration and rage that the city has been so unable to keep its promises. If you want to propose a different intervention, great, we're open to that. We'll listen, but only if it's serious. So yeah, I encourage everyone to go to safetforstadium.org, all one word, and sign our petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Chambers.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, City Administrator DeHoney, and council members. My name is Brian Chambers. I live in the Third Ward. I'm here to support the vision laid out in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, especially around expanding housing opportunity in low-rise residential areas. I know there's been debate about whether low-rise means three or four stories. And while I'm personally flexible on the number, I believe what matters more than height is how buildings fit in with setbacks, porches, size maximums, and stepbacks that maintain the feel of the neighborhood. So in a four-story building, the third level would step back, and the fourth level would step back. You can specify that in ordinance. It's not part of the land use plan, but in the ordinance phase. Thoughtful, form-based zoning can ensure that homes, new homes, whether three or four stories blend into their surroundings. I also understand the concern some residents have that new buildings might rent or sell at market rate prices and thus not be affordable to most middle-income families. But here's the reality. When we limit new housing, prices go up across the board, including for existing homes. The only way to stabilize prices and open up more options is to allow more housing types in more places. The comprehensive plan does that. Even so, market solutions are not enough. That's why I'm especially supportive of the Ann Arbor Community Land Trust. CLT's, Community Land Trust, remove land from the speculative market and make homeownership permanently affordable for critical workers, families, and first-time buyers. This is a model that keeps affordability in place over generations, not just through subsidies, but through structure. I also believe the comprehensive plan moves us in the right direction, towards general density, duplexes, triplexes, and small multifamily buildings that look and feel like they belong. This is all feasible, and it gives us the tools to tailor the details, height, form, lot size, during the zoning phase, which follows, with full public input. It's going to be like another two-year process. I'm assuming people realize that, right? There's lots of time for involvement. Let's not lose momentum over whether the cap is three or four stories. Let's focus on what unites us, a desire for more affordable, inclusive, and sustainable Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Ivanich.
Mayor Eric Ivanich is joining us on Zoom. Mr. Ivanich, go ahead.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Eric Ivanich, and I'm calling from the Third Ward. I want to begin by thanking the co-sponsors of DC 3 for bringing it forward to city council. This step is necessary, but it is not sufficient on its own. It's been clear for some time that we were not on track to meet our Vision Zero goals. When progress is lacking, we should expect a stronger, more focused response. Unfortunately, many of us feel underwhelmed by the current efforts and are questioning the commitment of city staff leadership. The most effective way to improve traffic safety is through better engineering of our transportation network. Infrastructure improvements make our roads safer every hour of every day. For example, local residents have launched the Safety for Stadium Now petition, calling for redesigning Stadium Boulevard from Crayner Joe's to Aldi. This stretch of road, which ranges from four to five lanes wide, passes by three schools and a couple of parks. In 2023, this area saw more combined serious injuries and fatalities than any year since we adopted Vision Zero in 2015, and only 2021 had more fatalities than did 2023. Therefore, I urge city council to officially adopt Safety for Stadium as one of many needed steps. On a personal note, I've been helping my nephew learn to drive. He has his learner's permit, and most of his practice driving has been with me. Together, we've witnessed far too many reckless and dangerous driving behaviors on the road. And while redesigning our streets must be the top priority, enforcement also has a role in curbing these behaviors. Looking at the data from 2024, from 2024, on the police department's transparency dashboard, there were 2,567 crashes that year. Since some crashes involved multiple vehicles, 5,155 drivers were involved in crashes. Meanwhile, only 2,978 citations were issued. If I'm understanding this data correctly, that means a driver was 73% more likely to be in a crash than to receive a citation in 2024. Since our city engages in state-level lobbying, I urge us to push for overturning the statewide ban on automated traffic enforcement. Automated enforcement reduces the need for risky traffic stops and applies the same standards across the board for all drivers. The evidence from other places is clear. Automated enforcement reduces crashes and saves lives.
Thirty seconds.
Finally, I ask that city council add an additional resolves clause to DC 3. This clause would direct city staff leadership, including the city administrator, the transportation manager, and the police chief, to report back to city council within a few months at most. Their report should outline the specific steps they will take to make meaningful progress towards Vision Zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Henry Hershkovitz.
Wikipedia defines Holocaust denial as "an anti-Semitic conspiracy theory that asserts in part that the actual number of Jews murdered is significantly lower than the accepted figure of approximately 6 million." It has been exposed in this chamber that the Anti-Defamation League slanders me as a Holocaust denier, perhaps for the same reason, because I believe that 6 million Jews did not die in the Holocaust. But I'm apparently not alone. Famed Holocaust historian Raul Hilberg, known as "the preeminent scholar on the Holocaust" by Wikipedia, commits the same error. In 1985, Hilberg wrote the student edition of "The Destruction of the European Jews." The first line in his chapter titled "The Perpetrators" reads, "The Germans killed 5 million Jews," not 6 million. What does that make Raul Hilberg if not a denier? And what about Yad Vashem? According to its website, Yad Vashem is the World Holocaust Remembrance Center in Palestine and is, quote, "dedicated to preserving the memory of Jews who were murdered." Their website continues, "Over 4,900,000 of the near 6 million Jews murdered by the Nazis and their accomplices are commemorated here." In addition to not being able to list 6 million deaths, they admit, quote, "This database includes information regarding victims of the Shoah, those who were murdered, many whose fate has yet to be determined, as well as some who survived," end quote. That would reduce their estimate of 4.9 million even further. Jewish victims of national socialist aggression would include, for example, shop owners who lost their businesses but did not, in fact, die during the war. And their list includes some who survived. What a confusing list this is. Why don't they clear the air and list for us exactly the names of Jewish deaths? That should be an open question for Ann Arbor high school students as they study this state-mandated topic. So when I'm called a Holocaust denier, I should say when I'm name-called a Holocaust denier by the Anti-Defamation League, I'm standing in pretty good company. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stefan Trendoff.
I just turned 76 two days ago, and my hearing is just cutting out a bit.
I'll speak louder.
It's a pleasure to see you. I haven't met some of you. I've been, I came here 35 years ago. And first, let me give you just a brief credential. We escaped from Bulgaria, came here, and started our life. I loved architecture, and I was playing hockey, and I gave it up, Chicago Blackhawks. I just gave it up for architecture. And the School of Architecture in Minnesota was second in the nation, and they drew. And my professor had only one hand, Ralph Rafson, famous professor. And he taught us how to, to our drawings, to communicate how to conceptualize cities, which fascinated me because my dad had a foundry, and I grew up in blocks. So 14 years ago, I met my friend here, and I've been doing three cities for the Kadapis, one city for the Sultanovon, one city for the Oman, and so forth. So they send me around the country to big architectural firms. So when I came here and I watched Mr. Haber struggle, I go, you know, the city needs something like this. So I did a concept. Well, the first concept was unpopular and so forth, and this is my fourth concept. And I'm sure that some of you have seen it, but I'm here to illustrate what's, because I'm working on the fifth concept. This is the, this is the fourth concept. This is the fourth concept. Right here is the fourth concept. I do everything pre-handing ink to get the impact, and then I color some of it. The nice thing about this plastic mariner, you can change it 100 times. Now, one of the jobs that's given to me, I have a huge rolodex. This is Wall Street. It's two blocks that goes from the river to Wall Street. But if you notice that they have an area about the size of the library lot that has trees, because we need to breathe, we need to breathe. We hired Cole Thrope, paid him $100,000 14 years ago to give us a concept, which now would be worth $300,000, to what we should do with our city. He calls the diagonal, we need to get this, we need trees, the corners need to be strong. And so we incorporated some of the things. But now comes to play that the library is interested. I love the library. It's a good project. This is my first delivery. Next month, you'll hear the second. Thank you so much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Philip Tribble.
I am a Third Ward resident and a 10-year resident of the city. And for all of those 10 years, I have also been a youth baseball and softball coach. And I'm going to say baseball, and I mean both when I say baseball, I mean both baseball and softball. And I'm coming to speak about the pop-up dog park that's been constructed at Veterans Park. It is very, very popular, and I want to give an opinion about what kids are losing with that dog park currently being in place where it is. We have enough challenges with youth baseball in Ann Arbor. There's no Little League in Ann Arbor, if you haven't noticed. It's very, very difficult to get fields because of the way the scheduling and reservation system works. And in already, we have, every fenced-in field at Veterans in Southeast or Bicentennial is already a dog park during the day. If you go there during the day, there's always dogs running around, every field. There's not really any enforcement. And so why would we go and take one of those fields and turn it into another space for dog owners when already we don't have a space for the kids who want to be able to play baseball and softball here in the city? On March 31st, some youth baseball coaches in Ann Arbor were notified that Vet's Number Four, which is where the dog park is, in Veterans Park, would remain a dog park until at least April 20th. That means that kids whose baseball games were scheduled for April 15th, 16th, 17th all now have to reschedule those games, and on only one of those dates where they offered an equivalent field, and that was the 17th, I believe. And so what are they supposed to do? They were supposed to play their first game of the season. Now, there's nowhere in the city for them to play. Money has been invested in the dog park, signage, new fences, and it's been a lot of encouragement for people to adopt that space. And that type of investment hasn't incurred at the baseball and softball fields in 10 years that I've been here. In fact, coaches have asked for signs that say, please keep your dogs off the field because of dog poop that always winds up on the fields, and then you've got kids stepping in it. It's a problem. And we were told by both rec and ed staff and city staff that the signs would not be placed because they would just be ignored anyway. And I believe that. They're not, dogs aren't supposed to be off-leash on those fields, and they're off-leash all the time. So, and also with the cancellation of reservations up until April 20th, I expect it'll be much longer than that. That's just what we're being told right now. So I'll come back in a few weeks and tell you that it was April 30th or even later. The bigger issue is that the city makes it too hard for kids and coaches to use the city's baseball fields and softball fields. Last year in May, I had a T-ball team out on the field at Burr Park, and someone who was on city staff reported it and said, who's using that field without our permission? It's a public park. I've got six and seven, four and five-year-olds, and a call and email gets made to Little League, Ipsy Arbor Little League, saying, please don't use our fields anymore. No wonder why people don't use the fields, because we're being told not to use them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeremy Haley.
Thank you all for having me. Jeremy Haley, Ipsy Township. I would just like to address Ann Arbor South project real quick by the South Building. If you do that for that developer with the parking structure, what is the next developer going to ask for it, ask from the city to do for you, for them, okay? And not only that, it was in the last year or so, I read an article or something about the income of the parking structures that you do have, that they weren't making enough money to help cover the cost of maintenance and stuff. So they're failing, so why would you go into another possibly failing project? And what I want to get into is, everybody, at the last, one of the most recent, or one of the recent WCC meetings I went to, one of the trustees mentioned that he was at another meeting that he heard that people are willing to live 46 miles away to work in Ann Arbor or around Ann Arbor. Nobody should have to live 46 miles away to work in Ann Arbor, okay? And be willing to. It's asinine, really is. And brings me to U of M. It brings a topic that maybe it should be of conversation to say, hey, as U of M keeps expanding its students, it keeps pushing people out. Not saying there should be a limit, but there should be a conversation as to, is 50,000 good enough? Because what, next year, what, in this fall, next fall is going to be 55? You know, 60, 65, 70? How many is enough? You know what I mean? It is a good question to ask and to, what is the city going to look like if you have 65,000 U of M students running around? You're going to have, how many 30, 40, you know, story buildings are you going to have to have to house them? While you're doing that, you're making, talking to some other, when I was on campus and talked to U of M students, the housing that they do have now isn't affordable for them for rent. So it crosses the board that whatever's being made is not affordable for nobody. And all needs to be addressed. And frankly, the question needs to be asked, what, how many students is, is a good amount of students for Ann Arbor? Because they can't indefinitely keep growing. Something's going to break on one end. Either you want more students or more families. Look inside the schools right now. Two private schools are combining because there's no, nobody's having kids. How many kids are in Ann Arbor Public Schools now? You have to consider all that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Haber.
I'm Alan Haber in the Fifth Ward. When the voters voted in 2018 to establish, say, Central Park and Civic Center Commons in the center of the city, that established with you an obligation to the voters, and a process was created to implement that direction of the Ann Arbor City Charter, to which you are all obligated and to which you serve. The other day, a couple meetings ago, you made a decision to ignore that obligation. The state of the obligation was, it had created a council of the commons to be advisory to the city council. The council of the commons was not functioning very well. It would not even look at the pictures that Stefan Trendoff showed you. Beautiful work that has been done by citizens here. What could be beautiful in the center of the city? Council of the Commons wouldn't look at it. It was divided in part because of the way it was composed. It made a decision, it made an agreement facilitated by Eric Briggs, that the council of the commons would recognize the need for professional consultation to see what were the next steps in the implementation of the city charter, and would therefore dissolve itself while professional consultants were employed to give some direction which we were unable to arrive at ourselves. We couldn't even look at pictures together. That request for proposals for consultants was never made. And indeed, your action on the library, saying, forget all that, forget the consultants, forget the commons, forget the park, let's give it to the library, that has violated your obligation to the voters, to your OSF office, to the agreement that we made that consultants would be brought in and that the public process of the council of the commons would be dissolved. That is what you have violated. It is betrayal of your obligation to the voters and to the city charter. The most simple way to deal with this, change the election that you want from August, the non-voting August election in 2025, to the real election in 2026, after which you've heard consultants give some report, do the request for proposals, get in a year some outline from people who know apparently better than you think people in Ann Arbor know. And if you want to put it, continue with the library thing, then there'll be a real vote. That will recognize your integrity to the voters. Otherwise, you're in violation of your OSF office, and you should, let's see, you know, that the state and the law does not recognize that. You should have some integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Briggs.
I know that we're going to have a conversation about this later on in the meeting on DC 5, but since that's at the very end of the meeting, I just wanted to mention to folks, since there were some comments, I strongly encourage folks, it sounds like some commentators have, but I'm not sure that everybody is aware that there is not yet a comprehensive plan released. And so for those who feel like, I've heard some comments here tonight that suggest that concerns about what's in the plan, just, the draft plan has not yet been released. And so I encourage folks to go to, you can just Google Ann Arbor Comprehensive Plan. You'll get onto the website, be able to sign up for notices, and you will be, I'm sure, notified as soon as council and Planning Commission are as well when the draft plan is released. And I know we're going to have a longer conversation about this later on tonight, but just wanted to make sure we got that out. Councilmember Cornell and I will be having a ward meeting later on this month where this is the topic of discussion. Stay tuned.
Councilmember Dish.
I would just like to announce that Councilmember Harrison and I will be having a coffee hour on Monday, April 14th, which is next Monday, from 6:30 to roughly, oh, 7:30, 7:45, with featured 7:30, 7:45, with featured guest Jennifer Hall from the Ann Arbor Housing Commission. So we'll be on the third floor of the downtown library. Please come.
Councilmember Ayer. Want to go?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry.
I can go, someone else.
Oh, go for it. Yeah.
Redina.
Thank you, Mayor. And I've, you know, spoken a bit about this on social media over the weekend, but wanted to continue to draw attention to the very real impacts of the Trump administration on our community. This last week, due to the nearly $11 billion in federal cuts to public health funding across the country, to addiction and addiction treatment and recovery organizations here in Ann Arbor, Don Farms and Home of New Vision experienced extreme cuts to their services here in Ann Arbor, forcing Home of New Vision, for example, to shutter their 24-hour crisis center here in the city and lay off, I believe, nearly a third of their employees. For me, this is personal. My sister was one of those employees. But the reality is that as a result of these ongoing cuts from the federal government, the hacksaw approach that Trump and Musk are taking to, to public services, we're seeing not only increases in unemployment here in Michigan and Ann Arbor, we're seeing prices rise, we're seeing our retirement funds tank, but we're also seeing lives put at risk. And so as, as folks in our community who have, who have struggled with substance use disorder turn to the traditional nonprofits for help, they may be met with less support than they've had in the past. And this is the direct impact of the Trump administration. And so they are not the only organizations that are being impacted this week. There are other organizations, nonprofits, who have been impacted by other cuts throughout, throughout the very short period of time that, that Trump has been in office again. But I am really just encouraging members of the community, to the extent that you can, to continue supporting these nonprofit organizations. If you're able to, to donate to them, to make sure that their services don't experience even more drastic cuts in the future, because lives of our neighbors are literally at risk. Thank you.
Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. First, I want to thank residents of Lower Burns Park who came out to a town hall that Councilmember Ackman and I hosted. We had the mayor there. We had Brett Leonard from city staff and Councilmember Dish, who is our liaison to the Planning Commission. And we talked about that comprehensive land use plan update. And it was a really great discussion. And for me, it really highlighted the importance of having face-to-face discussions with residents about this, this issue that's so important to our city's future. We'll talk more about it tonight with that resolution. But Councilmember Ackman and I, I know, are up for doing more of those throughout the ward. So stay tuned for more of that. I also want to comment on AC2, which is the city administrator's memo regarding the prevailing wage report. The findings in this memo are a great reminder of why ongoing oversight and enforcement are so important when it comes to protecting workers' rights. Whether it's an honest mistake or deliberate decision, when contractors fail to pay wages that they're required to under city policy, our workers lose out. Their workers lose out, and that's not acceptable. So that's why in 2023, we passed a stronger system of checks and accountability. We created that new enforcement structure with clearer expectations and better follow-through and a more consistent process. And we are now seeing each year since that, that these violations are being found. We know that most contractors want to do the right thing. I'm not trying to suggest otherwise, but this situation shows that mistakes can still happen and so can bad behavior. And it's our responsibility to make sure that the systems are in place to catch those early and correct them and ensure fairness for workers every time public dollars are being spent. I'll continue to push for that accountability and I'll continue to stand up for the workers who build and maintain this city.
Further communication from council. Councilmember Harrison.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. This past week, the Michigan Supreme Court made a decision that brings our legal standards in line with current law. The court ruled that the smell of marijuana alone is not a valid reason for police to search someone's car without a warrant. Marijuana is legal in Michigan for adults. That means the smell of it on a person in a car or even in the air is no longer evidence of a crime. This ruling is good for both residents and law enforcement. It helps ensure people aren't being criminalized for legal behavior. It protects constitutional rights against unreasonable search and seizure. And just as importantly, it gives officers a clear and consistent standard and one that reduces legal confusion, prevents cases from being thrown out, and protects officers from liability. It also creates space for something deeper, and that's rebuilding trust. When people believe the law is fair, they're more likely to follow it. When they feel respected, they're more likely to cooperate. And when we treat legal behavior as legal, we move closer to a justice system that actually honors justice. On a totally unrelated matter, I would like to just take a moment to extend my condolences to the family of DeShawn Leath. My thoughts and prayers go out to DeShawn's family, the CBI team, which stands for Community Violence Intervention Team, and the youth of Washtenaw County that have been positively impacted by DeShawn's dedicated service. May he rest in heavenly peace.
Councilmember Watson.
I want to second those words about DeShawn. I think many people know, I, I brought the First Amendment on marijuana funds, where we put a chunk of those funds toward youth services. And one of those people who taught me about youth services and what youth services mean to black people in Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti and across our county was DeShawn Leath. And I think it's often said in politics that, you know, the only people that know the jurisdictional boundaries are the politicians. And DeShawn was an exemplar of that fact. He went to Skyline. He did a lot of his work on housing commission sites in Ann Arbor, housing commission sites in Ypsilanti. So he tried to serve the community wherever he was. May he rest in peace. I always have a tough time with this transition, but yeah, May 10th, there'll be a Ward Two Listening Session at 3:00 PM on, at a Traverwood Library. Councilmember Malik and I invite you to attend. We'll be taking questions on all subjects. No guests this week, but we obviously expect to talk a lot about the comprehensive plan. So once again, hope to see you on Saturday, May 10th.
Further communications from council. Following up on the federal impacts and what's going on here in our community, I want to touch upon a stop-work order that we, at the city, recently were required to, required to issue on a number of crucial street projects. Crucially, some buffered bike lanes and hardened center lines all over the city, up to 12 miles on, on our various corridors. The stop-work order is the result of the, a needed environmental review not being issued by the Federal Highway Administration. We are not yet certain whether or not that, that will ultimately be issued, but because of uncertainty and, and changing requirements at the federal level, changing policies at the federal level, what would previously had been an expected issuance did not occur. We are hopeful, we have contacted, we were in the process of contacting our delegation to see if we can get this underway. However, for the time being, stop-work notices have been, have been issued. I'd like to recommend the, the following appointment for your consideration at our, at our next meeting to the Downtown Development Authority, Molly Rutter. We now have a forest consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion of the consent agenda. Councilmember Briggs.
Can you pull CA 11, please?
Councilmember Ackman.
I wanted to quickly mention relevant to the mayor's comments on the stop-work order. That's for the Safe Streets for All grant. And I knew that the Near Miss Analytics, which is CA 15? Wait, yes. The Near Miss Video Analytics System was part of that project. It has been spared because the environmental review had already been approved. So just wanted to mention that.
Further discussion of the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all in favor? All opposed? The consent agenda is approved with nine council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA 5, CA 6, CA 7, CA 8, CA 10, CA 12, CA 17, CA 18, CA 21, CA 23, CA 24. CA 11, resolution to approve a professional services agreement with transportation engineering design, DPC, for multi-lane road reconfiguration evaluation, the amount of $280,000. Moved by Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Ackman. Discussion, please, of CA 11. Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I also, I've got a few questions for staff. I also wanted to start by saying, extending my thanks to them. We had a nice, Councilmember Ackman and I had a good meeting with folks today. We've asked some questions that are in our agenda response packet, but I also wanted to daylight some of the answers that we had received and some of the conversations that we had had today. As staff can, can hear, we know as a council that this is a, it's a real commitment to us to, but we are not, we are not meeting our Vision Zero goals. And there were a number of questions about this or comments in our, comments tonight. So first question is, and I'm not sure who might be able to respond to this.
We have Trevor Bryden, Nick Hutchinson, and Luke Liu on Zoom.
Great. Thank you so much. So the first question is, can you please discuss the expertise of the consultants that are working on this project and how the models will be used, not to simply result in kind of predetermined outcomes? That is, more people kind of result in the need for more roadway capacity for cars that some of the more outdated models might have, might have resulted in in past years.
Thank you, Councilmember Briggs. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Trevor Bryden. I'm a transportation program manager with the transportation team at, at the city. The approach to modeling of, that will be part of the study is one that is much more based on current traffic patterns and volumes and one that is not based on future escalation of forecasted population or car use growth. The firm that we are recommending, join us in this, this work is Tool Design. They are nationwide leaders and best practices for, for bike and walking and, and placemaking projects throughout the US. They have a specific focus on, on bike facility design and they have the, both the intent of this, of this project to reexamine these roadways for, for all users of, of the roadways and rebalancing them so that the speeds that are present on those roadways are, are safer and slower for all users is well-understood. And they have the expertise to take roads that are more of this, of this fast character and making them into places for other modes of, of transport and, and human life.
Thank you. And then just a follow-up question. We've, you know, heard a call for, for reconfiguring immediately some of our, our roadways. Obviously, a goal that is articulated in our transportation plans. And there's kind of an impression that we could do this really quickly and simply at low cost without, without planning. Could you share how this evaluation contract will allow us to do some different scenario planning, advance our goal of sensibly reconfiguring streets to get people where they need to go, not just people and cars? And how this does, how this contract will advance our goals, not just get us stuck in kind of a planning engagement loop?
Thank you for that, for that question. And we're, we are looking at all 10 multi-lane corridors throughout the city all at once to try to get a, at once, understanding of the opportunities that are there for, for these roadways. The result of, of the study will, well, the study will look at, at each of these corridors and see, and see if there are multiple priorities that could be expressed through a conceptual redesign. And then getting feedback from community members and, and being able to then take those, take that feedback, take the concept and come with a recommended concept and a, and a cost opinion for what it would take to implement these roadways. It'll take us to about a 10 to 15% along the way for a design process with conceptual, with, with these conceptual designs, but it will give us a good answer for the types of priorities and the types of concerns that would be on these roadways and get us ready to be able to pick up and advance the design for those roadways that, that are of particular interest.
Thanks so much. I think my time is up on this one.
Councilwoman Ackman.
Thanks. Thanks for responding to those questions. I think you answered everything that we covered. And I guess I wanted to, you know, we had also discussed earlier amending this contract to incorporate setting target design speeds for interactions with vulnerable road users. And I understand that you all can do that administratively, and I just wanted to extend my thanks.
Further discussion? Councilmember Briggs.
I just wanted to elaborate with my gratitude. We had a really long, productive conversation with staff today, and I know that they have been creative at, at thinking about how to get this, this contract out there to, to do the, the work that we're interested in doing and make sure it really meets our community's needs. So thank you for that due diligence.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council and the community about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, one need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend section 5.32.2 of chapter 55, Unified Development Code, Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at this public hearing? Pardon me, is there anyone in-house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't have any callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, an ordinance to amend section 9.101, 9.103, 9.105, and 9.109 of chapter 55, pardon me, of chapter 11, Fire Prevention of Title IX of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in-house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't have anyone online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three, an ordinance to add chapter 35, Sustainable Energy Utility to Title II, Utilities and Services of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone in-house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Ken Garber again. Very glad to see the SEU moving forward. Really eager to see operations begin and some decarbonization action on the city level take place. I wasn't going to speak, but the only kind, I just, I noticed in the, in the text of the resolution, it directs the city administrator the resolution, it directs the city administrator to eventually come up with a governance structure for the SEU, I believe. No, it doesn't, it sets some fairly lenient deadlines on that. I just want to remind you that the Five Lakes Energy report from a year and a half ago now, recommended that any governance structure by, for the SEU be structured in such a way that it could fold into a future municipal electric utility run by the city, should one come into existence in the future. As you know, there's been some discussion about that. So just a reminder that that was a recommendation of Five Lakes Energy and that in devising a governance structure for the SEU over time, this should be kept in consideration. But very happy to, to see this on the agenda and to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in-house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't have any callers online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We have before us the regular meeting minutes of March 17 and the work session minutes of March 24, 2025. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Guzzi Edwin. Discussion, please, of the minutes. All in favor? All opposed? The minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend section 5.32.2 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Ackman. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Dish.
I spoke to this on first reading, so I will be very quick. We are asked to approve a proposed amendment to the UDC that will make it less burdensome to altered non-conforming structures. People sometimes make these kinds of alterations to accommodate greater residential density, which is something the city seeks to promote. Alterations to non-conforming structures frequently come before the zoning board of appeals. And over the past 10 years, the ZBA has approved nearly all of them. What should we conclude from that? That there may be a misalignment between our current standard and our current practices and priorities. Why should we have people appearing and bringing similar cases before a board that the board approves? That suggests we should change the ordinance. So this ordinance change will eliminate costly burdens that residents encounter for doing things like adding habitable space to their basements. It will also limit unnecessary expenditures of staff time. So I'll be voting for these amendments, and I will note that they are supported by the zoning board of appeals and recommended for approval by the city planning commission.
Further discussion? Sorry. Councilwoman Ackman. Thank you.
Thank you. ZBA is going to be very happy about this, as I think I spoke to last time. But I also wanted to point out something in one of the staff reports about this change in terms of affected parcels. They did a geospatial review and found, this is on, let's see, parcels, of the parcels, approximately 79% are non-conforming. So that means that we're taking a very large number of potential projects that would have required ZBA approval and allowing people to do that without the overhead. So I think this is a good thing. Every time these things come before the ZBA in the two years that I've been on the ZBA, it's pretty perfunctory because everyone pretty much agrees that these things are reasonable if they don't expand the non-conformity. So looking forward to this.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B2, an ordinance to amend section 9.101, 9.103, 9.105, and 9.109 of chapter 111, Fire Prevention of Title IX of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. May I move by? Councilmember Deena, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion, please, of B2. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B3, an ordinance to add chapter 35 Sustainable Energy Utility to Title II of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Malik. Discussion, please, of B3. Councilmember Malik.
Thank you, Mayor. Between both this ordinance establishing, establishing the SEU tonight and the gas franchise ordinance coming up next on the agenda, I am super proud of our city, its residents, and our city staff who have worked to get us here. While there are quite a few options on the table when it comes to working towards carbon neutrality, only some of these are effective. Even fewer are feasible in Ann Arbor, and yet even fewer are actually cost manageable. I believe these two ordinances fall into the category of hitting all three. If Ann Arbor's approach to this crisis, the A2 zero plan, is a puzzle, these two ordinances tonight are central pieces to that puzzle that is slowly but surely coming together. Momentum is building on the climate front in our city, and I'm excited to see what both of these first-of-their-kind and innovative ordinances achieve. Thanks.
Today is a important day in the history of Ann Arbor. It is perhaps the fondest hope of a representative to earn the gratitude of future generations. And with the creation of the A2 SEU, we at this table take this, take such an action, an action that will benefit our community for generations. Thanks to council's vote today, this community's action by its votes and treasure in November 22 and 2024, and crucially and foundationally, thanks to the ingenuity, initiative, and dogged work of Ann Arbor staff, we today take a crucial step towards a clean energy future. The A2 SEU will deliver 100% renewable, reliable, resilient energy without raising taxes and at rates that we believe to be compatible, also known as competitive, with the existing utility. The A2 SEU will offer residents crucial energy services. It will help with beneficial electrification. It will put Ann Arbor at the forefront of local government's fight to accomplish and realize our necessary carbon-free future. It is a great and good thing. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? DC1, resolution to authorize the city administrator to negotiate participation in?
Oh, C1.
C1. Strike that. C1, an ordinance to amend chapter 34 gas franchise and replace it with a new heating franchise and adopt a company agreement regarding climate action. Moved by Councilmember Ayer, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of C1.
Sir. Pardon? Oh, sorry.
Yes.
We are here at the request of the administrator for a special introduction. I am immensely proud to stand among these women who were my co-negotiators for this ordinance. I'm going to talk the least because they are experts and they will tell you what it's about, but let me start us off. How do I go down? Thank you. So the franchise, a franchise, is a contract. It is a contract with a private utility to use our city's rights away, and in exchange they get the privilege of providing a utility service to our, our residents for a specified period of time. In Ann Arbor, the gas franchise was for a period of 30 years. It was last signed in 1997, and it was set to expire in 2027. About a year and a half ago, listening to our residents, council directed that we should look at renegotiating the franchise. It was about to come to an end. We had A2 zero goals. There was much to be done. This team negotiated with DTE and is here to present to you today what, what I think is a great accomplishment. We have not been able to find in the country another city that has been able to negotiate climate and carbon reduction goals in a gas franchise. I couldn't be prouder today. With that, I'm going to turn it over. Actually, let me introduce my colleagues. We have Valerie Brader, who's our outside counsel from Rivin Oak. We have Dr. Stules, who is the director of OSI. And then we have Ms. Stewart, who is the chief of staff of Public Works. And they're going to walk you through the franchise. I will note that it is a 10-year term, but since it was going to expire in 2027, it is really only an eight-year extension from the original franchise. It clearly signals that this community is serious about moving away from carbon.
So one of the key factors, as Attorney Carr mentioned, is the fact that this, in addition to the franchise that is part of the ordinance, there is an agreement regarding climate action that is part of the, this put together. And that is, as we noted, we believe the first in the country to do that. What it does is it really creates a process for continued work and a decision every two years about what actions will, that can be taken together. So it's not an attempt by us to think in the next 10 years, you know, five years from now we'll do exactly this, six years, and then have events overtake it. It instead creates a process where working together every two years, new actions are identified, new progress is decided on, and that the people at the table making those decisions also have the authority to carry them out. So it's not a situation in which you have some folks negotiating, deciding to do things, and then they've got to, you know, when they're trying to carry them out, get the authority. You've got the folks at the table that deal with that. It also ensures that if there are disagreements, we have a way to put the top of the city, with the city administrator, with the top of the company, the president of DT Gas, together to work it out. And we have confidence that this will allow a continuing development of the work that can be done together and will build, therefore, on the progress that has been made at each turn. And as part of this, we also had a situation, or were able to work out what those first two years of activities will be. And for that, I will turn it over to my colleagues.
I know you cannot see the slides. CTN is working on it, so apologies on that front. For our work plan, there were a number of things that we negotiated because we know they're really critical to the work that we do. One is we negotiated a joint agreement around energy waste reduction or energy efficiency. And that includes direct funding for rentals for our renters and our landlords as we're moving forward to try to decarbonize a very hard-to-decarbonize sector. So there's guaranteed funding, actual brand-new dollars that come into the city to help make that transition easier for folk. There's also a commitment that if this is successful, let me, let me rephrase that, when this is successful, this will become an official program that will be offered throughout all of DT's service territory. We also have a commitment around geothermal. We need to have an alternative to how we are going to sustainably heat and cool our homes. This is a gas utility. They cannot do things like heat pump programs. They cannot fuel switch. So we had to think about what's the alternative for this particular utility and the services that they provide. And for us, we've made a pretty significant commitment to geothermal, shared geothermal systems in particular. And so they have agreed to bring funding to the table for the Bryant project. Now, it, at one point, we thought that would be 30 million. The answer has turned into whatever the number is that we need for that project. So we don't have a cap as long as it's financially viable. And more than that, they've also agreed to bid on a second project. There was no guarantee they win that project. They have agreed to come in in a good faith offer to help us move that forward. This is really significant for Ann Arbor, but it is also really significant for the entire service territory because if they figure out how to do geothermal, that means they offer geothermal to more places. This is how we see that transition that we've been talking about. Well, you have half your slides coming online. This is great. A few other quick things to note. We have also been looking at a biodigester at our wastewater recovery facility. We've done a number of studies, and we're at a point where we need help to understand the viability of moving that officially forward. Thankfully, they have agreed to work with us to seek the funding and to prove viability of this project and to help us, if it is viable, bring it on, online by 2035. We also recognize that the work we are talking about needs to be done with dignity, with people who have good-paying, family-sustaining jobs. It won't work if we take people out of the fossil gas industry and don't leave them an opportunity to transition. So we've been working on a workforce development strategy with our local trade unions, and there is funding in this to help implement that, to make sure that people do not lose their jobs but are skilled to transition to a decarbonized workforce. That's also exciting to make sure our private sector is ready to support us. And then this last piece, may not feel that significant on paper, but is enormously significant. We spend a lot of time in regulatory proceedings on this side of this counter here. And one of the things we've been fighting for is we need to repair infrastructure as opposed to replace infrastructure, as long as you can do that safely. The reason is it's more affordable. Plus, we think that we're only going to be on the system for a period of time. So we don't want legacy infrastructure that's going to last 50 to 75 years. We don't want to leave people holding a bag for that infrastructure. So we have fought, and I want to give DT negotiating team a lot of credit. They came to the table very sincerely, especially on all these topics, but especially this one, and said, we understand. We are willing on working with you to give you sightlines on why we think we have to replace something versus repair it, and we will try to repair whenever we can as opposed to replace. This is not standard utility practice. There's also some other things in here, like help decarbonizing our own city facilities. But the work plan, again, is negotiated every two years, and so it will continue to move as we move forward and have better sightlines on what comes next.
And a few more things on the work plan. It commits to quarterly meetings with, between DT Gas and the public services team to review plans for upcoming projects, discuss possible opportunities for project coordination or alignment, and discuss any issues with ongoing projects occurring in the public rights of way. With these recurring meetings, we are seeking better collaboration and better infrastructure data sharing. Additionally, we hope to, it will ensure a dig-once approach whenever possible to reduce costs, costs minimize repeat disruption to residents, and decrease the risk of damage to public infrastructure. Through these meetings, we will report, we will review reports of damage, including crossboring through sewers, which can happen, and track repairs or needed restoration for completed projects. DT also agrees to work with us to address some information pain points that we've experienced for the city, especially related to A2 zero reporting and the commercial and multifamily energy and water benchmarking requirements. And additionally, they've also agreed to provide the city with greater insights into some of the key areas of complaints for residential customers in the city so we can understand those better. That is the franchise. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Discussion of C1. Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I want to speak in strong support of the new heating franchise agreement with DTE and to also name what a big deal this is for the city. I had the privilege of serving on the working group that advised our negotiating team during this process. And what they've achieved and what we've achieved together is momentous, not just for Ann Arbor, but as a model for cities across Michigan and across the country who are serious about climate action. Going into it, the question was, could we use this rare opportunity, a utility franchise agreement that was expiring, to make real progress toward our climate goals? That's not how franchise agreements usually work. Most are 30 years long, they get renewed with little fanfare, and they don't reflect any of the challenges or values that we're grappling with today, especially when it comes to climate. But here in Ann Arbor, we decided to try something different. The result is an agreement that puts us on a much stronger path. It's a 10-year term through 2035 with no automatic renewal. That alone gives us more leverage than we've ever had before. But we also secured annual public reporting on gas usage in the city so we can measure and respond to trends, a shared commitment to electrification and decarbonization, a framework for collaboration to support residents and businesses as they move off gas, training to facilitate a just transition for workers, and a clear expectation that any future agreement must align with the city's adopted energy and climate plans, including our goal to become fossil-free. This isn't just some symbolic. It gives us tools to gather data, engage the public, and hold DTE accountable in ways that weren't possible under our old agreement. We didn't get everything, and DTE didn't either, but we ended up with something that lays the groundwork for a just, community-driven energy transition. And I want to be clear, this didn't happen by accident. It happened because our city staff and our expert outside attorneys got creative and they stuck with it. It happened because our negotiating team pushed for more. I also want to emphasize that this sets a precedent. It shows that cities can negotiate with utilities and get meaningful results. We are not powerless. We can move away from outdated models and toward a cleaner, more accountable energy future. Thank you so much to city staff, to the negotiating team, my fellow working group members. Thank you so much to city staff, to the negotiating team, my fellow working group members, and all of the residents and advocates and experts who helped get us here. This is a collective win, and it's something we can all be proud of.
Further discussion? I would like to second everything that Councilmember Iyer has said. This is an excellent step forward. It is a step forward that we were able to take as a result of a committed community, councilmembers who show up and staff who has the vision to identify opportunities and to seize them. The gas franchise, which will be forged at our second reading in our next cycle, it will improve our roads, it will save the municipal organization money, it will save infrastructure, it will improve service to residents, and it will enable us with cooperation from the utility to reduce carbon. I am particularly excited about DTE's willingness to work with us with respect to implementing district geothermal. This is something that I think we all hope will be the, you know, gas company's future. A gas company is a heating company, and district thermal, district geothermal is heating. And if we can be a part of their structural transition to that service, that's just amazing. Looking forward to today's first reading and next meeting, second reading. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. DC1 Resolution to authorize the city administrator to negotiate city participation in the Ann Arbor South project, including potentially owning, operating, and bonding for parking decks. Move by, Councilmember Dish. Second to by, Councilmember Iyer. Discussion, please, of DC1. Mr. Delacorte.
Mayor, Mr. Delacorte is joining us on Zoom.
All right, can everybody see me?
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did receive two questions regarding the agenda item prior to the previously postponed meeting. The first is, where do access TIF funds come from if the TIF will terminate once all eligible activities are paid off? It seems there is no opportunity for excess funds, if I'm understanding the agenda response memo correctly. Yes, to a certain extent. If there is available TIF over the lifetime of a project that does not have an eligible activity assigned to it, then there will be TIF that is unutilized in relationship to the project. It is not excess TIF. It does not get collected and sit in an account awaiting for an eligible activity to be assigned to it. It is just unavailable. At some point during the life of a plan, a plan can be amended to add eligible activities to utilize that TIF, but it is only created once an eligible activity is approved, conducted, inspected, and then that eligible activity is reimbursed. So there is not necessarily, quote-unquote, excess TIF. There is sometimes TIF from a project that is unutilized because there is either not enough eligible activities or there is a choice made not to reimburse everything that is eligible. The second question is, in the event there are any excess TIF funds, is it correct that they would only become available once all other eligible activities are paid off, likely towards the end of the 30-year bond period? Am I concerned that any infrastructure upgrades to this area could be delayed 20-plus years indefinitely if no surplus funds are actually viable? Again, this kind of goes to the first question. There really is not any excess funds. What there are is funds that are unassigned. Currently, within the project that's being discussed, all available TIF, as estimated over the 30-year life of the plan, has been assigned to an eligible activity. So currently, as the plan is structured, all of the available TIF that will be created or estimated from the project over the lifespan of it has been assigned a corresponding eligible activity. If for some reason more TIF is created during the lifetime of the plan and those eligible activities are paid off with that additional TIF above estimate, there could be an amendment to the plan that assigned additional eligible activities for utilization of that TIF, or what is more likely, and what has happened, I think with every plan we have approved over the last several years, the plan actually pays off all of the eligible activities early. The plan is then ceased to exist, and all the taxes go back to their normal jurisdictions. So I think that answers the two questions, and obviously, I'm here to answer anything additional if necessary.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilmember Dish.
I'm sorry. Then, these answers are great, but an earlier memo that we received suggested that there was unassigned TIF revenue that could be put toward rebuilding sanitary sewer capacity in that area. Has that estimate changed, and is it now the case that there is, or, sorry, what happened to that?
Understood. The reason I say that all of the available TIF is assigned is because, post that memo, it was determined that the unassigned TIF that was not assigned to an eligible activity should be assigned to those stormwater improvements and sanitary improvements, public infrastructure, which is allowable under the TIF plan, and that those additional TIF revenues over the lifetime of the plan have now been connected to an eligible activity, utilizing them over the life of the plan. So that is a change since that memo went out.
Thank you. That's great. That's a change, but it verifies what has been claimed about the project, which is that it could help us fund the rebuilding of the sanitary sewer capacity. So that's terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Councilmember Watson.
I have a question that I believe can be answered by the development team. Acknowledging, of course, that the city has our own bond council, with ongoing tariffs and market turmoil, how are you at Crawford Whoring thinking about risk to the project and by extension to the city?
It's a great question, Councilmember. The reality is, at the beginning of every construction project, we enter into gross-maximum-price contracts with our general contractors. Some of those contracts will likely have force maturer clauses in them and some protections in favor of the general contractor for surprise events, that acts of God, so to speak. But in the case of the current economic environment, I think the best answer to your question is negotiating contractual protections for price control at the time that we begin construction. The turmoil in the market as it relates to the tariffs specifically is one that we're tracking very closely. And I think something worth note, we certainly have concerns, it's our business, and we have lots of concerns, as many do in the marketplace currently. However, in most construction projects, materials represent roughly 50% of the hard cost of the project. And as it relates to the hard cost, hard cost represents roughly 2/3 of the total cost of the project. So even if all of the materials in the project were subject to significant increases in tariffs, we're not talking about significant increases to every aspect of the construction cost. It doesn't mean that it's not meaningful. I think anything in excess of a couple percentage-point swing in any given construction project can be very meaningful and would be very meaningful to the city. But I do think it's worth noting that the cost of tariffs is not the only thing that goes into consideration with respect to budgeting for these things. And again, contractual protections will exist at the time of beginning the project. And tying this discussion together with one that was brought up at the last work session, that's also part of the benefit of phasing a project like this and in keeping with packaging together portions of the project that fit neatly and ensure that we have accurate pricing as of the time that we start each subsequent phase.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. DeHoney.
I just wanted to point out, when this particular item was scheduled, we had not yet scheduled a work session on the 17th. So there is another discussion on this topic on the same night that Maura will come back to talk about the DDA. So the 17th will be available to respond to questions that we receive through Sarah between now and then.
Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. Yeah, kind of in regards to that, I think one of my concerns about this resolution is that it does a lot. I know there's, it's obviously allowing us to enter into the next stages of negotiations, but it also instructs the administrator to bring back, do those next steps in terms of bond issuance and bring something back to us for a vote. And then also on the special assessment district, and obviously, we're, I know we all have some questions about this, and that's why there's not all, there's a work session next week. And so a few of those pieces, I feel like we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. There is a lot to be enthusiastic about this project, right? It's exciting to see 1,000 units of multifamily housing proposed in the city and 210 affordable housing units, and the level of investment that's being proposed, I think that I'm going to hear later on, probably a lot of excitement about that. And I know that we have been anticipating this in TC1, and it's exciting, and we hear the enthusiasm from the development team around what's possible here. My concerns around this, as folks know, really involve our public investment in this project. And I think we really, it's our duty to be asking tough questions about this. This is proposed to be the largest brownfield proposal in city history. We obviously don't have a plan that's approved in front of us, 10 times larger than what we've done before. It also suggests that we would create a new parking authority for the city, of which we have no sort of planning around that. But it's requiring us, you know, that's where I see a bit of the handcuff with this project, right? It's a 30-year commitment to this project. So it's not that, you know, we heard about the risk around this project for the developer, those contractual protections. We don't have those yet. We're asked to, you know, go into this purchase land from the development for $11.4 million, then issue, as a city, general obligation bonds for $146 million. And then we all hope that there is success in this, if it moves forward, but the payback of those bonds is $234 million, right? And for this level of public investment, we're not necessarily, we're not really seeing, we're seeing more housing, but we're not seeing housing that's aligned with our other values and goals, right? We just excitedly approved this new gas franchise and talked about how we are going to be weaning ourselves off of gas. However, these 1,000-plus units are not proposed to be gas-free or even constructed to make that transition, as far as I'm aware. However, this is still a concept, so nothing's in front of us now. Maybe something that will be put in front of us will suggest a really strong, environmentally-conscious development for this $300 million of public investment, and then that might be something that I could rally behind. But right now, I'm asked to rally behind us building the reparking structures that we have a commitment to for the next 30 years.
Councilmember Dish.
This project is the first to take up transit corridor zoning. It's something that we all ran on, and many people voted for us because they supported it. And the vision of TC1 zoning is so simple. Unpave the parking lot and create housing and living space for people. But realizing this vision is hard. It's harder than many of us and our supporters expected. So it is understandable that we may not have realized how much would be asked of us to make it real, because you don't just plunk down housing on parking lots as you would on a monopoly board. You have to build infrastructure to make parking lots into livable spaces. And when you take a parking lot that is currently used by hundreds of workers and convert it into housing, you need to give them someplace to park. Infrastructure creation needs public and private investment, and what does that look like in this case? Councilmember Briggs has already spoken about it. This project will be the largest brownfield proposal in the city's history, around 300 million. Am I, what, oh, sorry. No, sorry, in public money. But the private investment dollars total more than that, at 469 million. So we've hired an analyst, PFM, to review this financial commitment. PFM works for cities, makes sure that they don't lose their money, makes sure that they aren't investing more than is reasonable. Its findings are favorable. If we want to go further into the details of this investment, we need to start investing staff time, much more staff time than we have already. And that's what this resolution asks us to authorize Mr. DeHoney to do. I think what we need to consider to authorize, about authorizing that authorization step, I have too many authorizations in that sentence, but is what investing in this project would bring to the city. And it is 1,000 units outside of downtown. It is 250 affordable housing apartments, and it also is the equivalent of a payment in lieu. Normally, we have to choose between those things. Do you want the units, or do you want the payment? But this project is offering to construct the units, guarantee payback of the construction loan, and pay the mortgage until the city takes it over.
Councilmember?
Yes, okay. I will speak again later.
This actually was your second time.
Was it on this?
I thought you asked a question.
Oh, I did. Okay.
My regrets. Councilmember Iyer.
Okay. Thank you. So I want to explain why, from everything I know so far, I believe that this is a smart and responsible investment for our city, and also to address some concerns that I've heard from constituents and colleagues. So first, let's talk about the financing. Every financing model comes with assumptions, and yes, we should always scrutinize those. But what's just as important is how we structure risk. And in this case, the bond repayment is designed to come solely from the new tax revenue generated by the development itself. This means the city's general fund and the existing taxpayer dollars are not on the hook. This is a self-contained, self-sustaining financial strategy, and if the development doesn't happen, the bonds aren't generated. They don't get issued. I also understand the concern that some have raised about the city stepping into the role of infrastructure builder for private development, but this is not unprecedented. Every parking structure in downtown was built by the city, because structured parking simply doesn't pencil out for private developers at this scale, especially when they're including meaningful public benefits like affordable housing. Cities are better positioned to take this on because of lower borrowing costs and tax exemptions. This makes the financing more valuable, and it unlocks long-term benefits that private markets alone can't deliver. And the benefits here are substantial. More than 200 units of affordable housing, 1,000 housing units overall, new retail and commercial space, public open space, and a full-service hotel that our community has long needed. This isn't just about one project. It's about setting the tone for the future of the South State Corridor and showing what TC1 zoning can make possible when we plan boldly and think long-term. Let's also acknowledge that structured parking is necessary for the kind of dense, walkable, transit-oriented development TC1 envisions. Without it, we either get sprawling surface lots or projects that don't get built at all. The proposed amount of parking here, just 0.6 vehicles per unit, is well below what you'd see in a typical development. It reflects the site's proximity to transit, the city's mode-shift goals, and our desire to reduce vehicle miles traveled. But we also have to be realistic. Most households still own cars, and developers simply can't get financing for multi-phase projects without market-justified parking. Importantly, this won't just serve residents of the new development, and it's not just for the developer. Arbor South is designed to be a destination for all Ann Arborites and beyond, a place with shops, restaurants, a hotel, a public gathering space, and more. This This is like building a second downtown on the city's south side. It only makes sense that we would provide public parking, just as we do downtown, so people from all parts of the city and beyond can access and enjoy it. So for these reasons, I'll be voting yes to authorize the next step in this process and I hope my colleagues will, too.
Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. I won't tout, you know, people have already said what this brings us. It's a good project. I'd be delighted to support it. It's a byright project. It's the kind of density we want to see in our TC-1. It's thrilling to have a project in this newly zoned district, in Ward 4 no less. But what I have a really big difficulty getting over is using public funds to finance and operate parking garages as part of this deal. Build all the garages you want on your own. I'm fine with that, you know, up to the limit. But to me, this is taking tax generation that we would be having, you know, built on top of what we have now, ideally to expand the ride, improve walkability, make biking safer. And, you know, instead we're talking about committing, I think, $146 million to pave, to build parking decks. And that's a huge investment in infrastructure that I think moves us in the opposite direction of our transportation and climate goals. I know people drive. They're going to drive here. They're going to have cars. No one is saying that they're not going to have cars. But I think we also have to recognize the setting that this is in and ask ourselves, is it really serving what our vision is of TC-1? It's, I think, five lanes of traffic that you have to walk across in both directions, across Eisenhower, across state. This project is solid in terms of what's contained within it, but how does it connect around it? It seems that the vision is cars, 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 more cars. Beyond that, we're locking the city into a long-term financial stake and keeping those garages full. So, you know, I have questions about whether people are actually going to pay to park in these. We have ample pavement right across the street. They will cross them safely, but there you go. So I think, like I said, this lacks, this area lacks the kind of safe, non-motorized connections that we actually want to build and help people get around without a car. The decks will supposedly generate revenue, but I still don't think it's the best use of public money. And so that's why I won't be supporting moving forward any further.
Councilmember Cornell, I'm sorry, Councilmember Malik.
Thank you. I appreciate everything that has been said tonight so far by my colleagues. I based my decision tonight on a few facts and assumptions, based on input from the public as well as on information provided to me. First, tonight's decision is about continuing the process, not approving the project outright or approving any individual bonding decisions. Next, the use of tax increment financing, or TIF, largely makes this project pencil out for the city. Yes, it is based on several assumptions and projections, some projections that bump out to the year 2057, but by and large, the money side of things makes sense as described with the assumptions we are able to make at this time. Once I generally felt okay with the funding mechanism, I turned my attention to the risk the city would be taking on. The parking structures are a large investment. In fact, if approved as described, it would be the largest brownfield investment in the city's history. But the project as a whole is also the largest private investment in the city's history. The potential use of one or more special assessment districts, in this case, to protect the city's liability is important and something I will be keeping an eye on in the final development agreement once it comes. Additionally, building any parking structures in phases and bonding for them at those moments in time also means the city is not taking on these described costs all at once before the project has proven itself early on. Finally, as described by my colleagues, Arbor South could bring many benefits to the city, including providing much-needed housing and affordable housing and a desirable level of density for a new residential area. Because of this, I will be voting yes on this resolution tonight, but look forward to obtaining additional information, particularly on the public investment side of things, as the process unfolds and engaging fully in future decisions that come to council related to this project. Thanks.
Councilmember Cornell.
That's the great thing about having so many really smart and thoughtful colleagues, is you've largely said a lot of what I want to say about this project. I think where I'm getting tripped up is when TC-1 was passed, it was designed to encourage more sustainable forms of development with reduced resources and energy needs. And so to me, what feels glaringly obvious as an omission is that this development doesn't satisfy a lot of what we would expect or find attractive in other developments. There is a potential for geothermal, is not a commitment to advancing our A2-Zero goals. And when I ran for office, I told people, we need more housing so people don't drive into Ann Arbor. And I firmly believe that that's true. I do, we are in a housing crisis. This is a great project. But I'm really concerned about the commitments that it makes to sustainability in Ann Arbor. I think Councilmember Ackman did a really good job of describing it's, that is not a great place to get around as a pedestrian or a bicyclist. And the money that we're using does not improve walkability, bikeability. It does nothing except improve the sewer line, which is obviously valuable. It's valuable infrastructure, but it is a tiny amount of the overall brownfield request. And I think it's also important to know, I know that this will come back and we'll continue to have these conversations, but the brownfield application isn't even finalized. It's going back for additional, additional revisions because it's not finalized. So that, to me, from a finance perspective, gives me pause. I don't, I would feel better about saying yes if we were going to do this after the work session, when we've had a time to go through and have these conversations in more detail and certainly be able to see a final brownfield plan. So all of that said, I think we do need to take a hard look at the recurring expense. When I've asked for budget items to be considered, I've been told repeatedly that recurring expenses are really bad. But now we're talking about a recurring expense and we're owning property outside of downtown, so that feels also very nervous to me, makes me very nervous when I don't understand the rest of the financing piece of it. So all of those things said, I do think this is a good project. But I would like to amend this resolution and add a resolved clause that was sent to the city clerk on March 17th, when I thought that this would be discussed at that meeting, and I'll read it aloud. The additional resolved clause, it reads, "Resolved, the city council directs the city administrator to negotiate commitments from the developer for features in accordance with the city's A2-Zero and Vision Zero plans that include, for example, solar or geothermal energy, increased access to busing, and safe multimodal transportation."
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Briggs. Councilmember Cornell, you stole the floor on the amendment.
On the amendment? Okay, thank you. This, I know that we do not require these of projects, and I know that we're getting, obviously, housing and affordable housing, as I've already acknowledged. This feels like, if the city wants to go into partnership with a developer on a development of this size, then I would like to see more of our goals and our values as a community advanced. And I feel like asking for a little more thought around A2-Zero and Vision Zero plans and how this project specifically would advance those helps also show to the community that when we say that we are going to increase housing for XYZ reasons and yet still remain committed to the things we said mattered to us when we ran for office, like A2-Zero, like Vision Zero, that we are making that expectations of developers, especially when we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in investment. This feels like entering into a partnership that is far more equitable than what we're currently considering.
Councilwoman Dish, Redina.
I just have a question as it relates to the language. Obviously, this directs the administrator to negotiate commitments. Is there an expectation that it obligates that one of these things needs to be achieved in order to move forward, I guess? My, I guess my question is about whether or not there is an expectation that, that one of these things has to be accomplished? Or if the negotiations move forward and they come back to us and are unsuccessful, what impact do you believe that that has on the plan? Or is this just a direction, directive for the administrator to negotiate to the best of his ability?
I'm not a lawyer, Councilmember Redina. I will tell you that if the, if the city administrator, who I know always does his best for us, if the city administrator does not come back with these commitments, at least some of them, and show progress on them, then this project will not have my support at the end.
Would you like me to address it, Councilmember Redina?
Yeah, I mean, if you feel that there's, yes, please.
I do not think the current language has a requirement that a commitment be in the contract. It is a direction to negotiate, and negotiate implies that any number of results are possible. However, if it would give council more peace of mind, we could add a clarifying word or two, but I don't move for an amendment to an amendment, so I defer that to you.
No, no, thank you. I appreciate that. And I asked that question because I think these are all, you know, incredibly laudable goals. There are things that I certainly would love to see implemented into this, into this project. But I also felt relatively comfortable with the existing project because of the number of things that we are achieving through the, through the city already. And so I, that was my question for this. You know, I would love for all of these things to be included, that, you know, there are a number of things that I would like to be included in every project that we do. But I also acknowledge the impact on housing and particularly affordable housing and other things that others have mentioned throughout this discussion that are also incredibly important to me. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Dish.
I appreciate Councilmember Redina posing the question and sharing his thoughts because we thought a lot and debated a lot on Planning Commission when the TC-1 zones were being created about what should go into them. And we talked about including explicit requirements for sustainability. And our decision was that what we are trying to do with TC-1 zoning is to get housing in parts of the city where there, where it doesn't exist, to extend the, as Councilmember Iyer spoke so eloquently, to create a second downtown, to extend the heart of the city to another place. I mean, the city that I grew up in had four downtowns, and it wasn't a big city. So we concluded on Planning Commission that packing more into TC-1 would probably make it unrealizable. And it would be different if we are five years out and we have geothermal, and that's an infrastructure that we're supporting. But we don't have it yet. So we have a project that is responding to the things that we asked for. I, I think there's a reason why we don't require the lovely things that are in this amendment, and because I would like to see this project realized, I think I will not support the amendment. I think I will not.
For my part, I'm, no, I think for my part, I am okay supporting the amendment as I hear it from council and council, from council, council members and council at large. These are, these are goals that we have. Some of these goals are reflected in components of the existing project, others are not. An additional conversation with, between the administrator and the project team may bear fruit, may not, but it's, what I interpret the amendment to be a request for specificity with respect to those conversations. And in that light, I'm perfectly fine with moving forward on that basis. Councilmember Briggs.
Thanks, yeah. I'll be supporting this as well. I think, as we know, development agreements hold a lot of weight, right? And they hold our expectations. And so I think going into this, it's nice to have some direction in terms of those negotiations about what we'd like to see out of it. I see this as significantly different than our TC-1 discussions. That was a development that was supposed to hold itself up by its, you know, get itself up by, without public support. This is $300 million of public support that's going into this. That's about $240,000 per unit of housing. And, you know, it's an anticipated, I think, 1% of the city's population that could potentially live here in the future, right? So I think our expectations going into this and what this development looks like and what it holds are important. I, thus, we've had, I've had some lovely conversations with, around this, around this project, and some of them have left me with a few concerns and questions. There's some exciting things, there's also some questions. This is our second downtown. Is this a second downtown that is guarded by private security guards? That's my understanding. Is this, at some points in the conversations, this has been something that is discussed, that there would be shuttles that would take people to and from downtown? So I'd like to see, you know, to make sure that this is, is something that actually is a project that aligns with our values if we're going to be investing this level of support in it.
Iyer, then Gossie Edwin, then perhaps call it a day on the amendment. Councilmember Iyer?
Yeah, I, I just, I wanted to respond to the, to the point. I appreciate the arguments on all sides. I really do. And I most of all appreciate that we're having this thoughtful discussion. I do think that, to Councilmember Briggs's concern or point that our TC-1 discussions were different, it's important to note that those discussions were theoretical. And this is the first project that is actually putting TC-1 to the test. And what we're learning is that if we want to realize density, what I'm learning, is that if we want to realize density in TC-1, we're going to need to provide a form of parking, unless we want to continue to have massive parking lots. People, again, developers cannot get financing without adequate parking, and we're talking about just .6 per unit, which in and of itself is, that is what we envisioned for TC-1. So I will support the amendment because I see no harm in having another discussion about it. But I also continue to support this because, as we've said, the fact of congregating people together and having housing at this scale on a transit line where people don't have to use that car that they have, in and of itself, helps us realize our climate goals and without having to necessarily layer on all these extra things which could make the project unfeasible, so.
Councilwoman Gossie Edwin.
Thank you. You know, for me, I think that, I appreciate that some of these conversations have happened in regards to especially accessibility and just evaluating, you know, what are nearest access to bus stops to units, for example. And I note that these, it's in close proximity to three full-service bus stops currently. You know, as accessibility and inclusive design for cities really emphasizes is that it's about making infrastructure that's safe for all ways people move around, including cars. That being said, you know, I will be supporting this amendment because I think having that further conversation about how does this or can this align with some of our values and goals around climate, accessibility, it's a worthy conversation to have. Thanks.
Further discussion on the amendment. Councilwoman Watson. Councilmember Watson.
So, yeah, I support, I'll play on supporting the amendment. But I mean, I do hope that the administrator can kind of give us the outcomes of these discussions and perhaps maybe if it ends up being a set of options. Because I know with Vision Zero, I mean, you know, but when it's 2030, the Zero 2030 Plan, it can mean many things from, you know, is it lead gold certification, is it lead zero certification? I mean, these standards have a lot of different meanings, and there are a lot of different levels that we get to. I like this idea of geothermal, we'll see if it's possible. I think because it's so hard to get affordable housing built in the city, 200 units is more than we've built in the village to date with village funds to date. It's 20% more than this type of brownfield project would usually need. Usually, this would need 150 units. This is 200 units, so I guess 50 more. The fact is, is that it's hard to get financing for affordable housing. It's hard to get land for affordable housing outside of city-owned lots downtown. And this project would also benefit from the private development, assuming costs of planning, that would normally be borne by village-funded activity. So, I'll support the amendment, but I'd like to have an understanding of what the costs and benefits are.
Further discussion on the amendment? On favor? Sorry, this is on the amendment exclusively. Let's do a roll call vote. Roll call vote starting with Councilmember Gazie Edwin.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
No.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Further discussion of the main motion as amended. I got Councilmember Watson.
There are many questions yet to be answered on this project, especially as part of the brownfield plan that this body will discuss at a future work session. This project and every public-private partnership is susceptible to risk. Even so, at this time, I feel it is appropriate to authorize the administrator to continue negotiations. I feel that when faced with the opportunity to create 200 affordable housing units and 1,000 total units of housing in a high-priority TC1 area in a project that has been analyzed by external consultants, the city should continue to pursue it until we have all the details necessary for a final decision. In Ann Arbor and at this council table, we have been clear that housing is a core value. Other cities have used taxpayer-backed municipal bonds to pursue different goals, even in this uncertain time. Just last month, Grand Rapids issued $128 million in city-backed bonds for a combined stadium and concert venue. Some of that financing is for parking decks. There's a different payback plan relying on revenue from Kent County's hotel tax, but the taxpayers are still assuming some of the risk of the project for the 30 years it takes to repay the bond. If a city can use these tools to increase sports and entertainment, I think there's all the more reason to investigate bonds to support a project that could deliver on housing. Crawford-Hawing is a proven partner, but don't take my word for it. A web search reveals that their Bridge Park development in Dublin, Ohio, has delivered on the promise of building 1,000 units using $286 million in public financing through the Columbus-Franklin County Finance Authority. And I also looked at some research on Dublin, the municipal partner, and I found that it's the first and only city in the U.S. to achieve AAA credit ratings from four agencies. I don't believe they got there by choosing bad partners in public-private partnerships. The usual disclaimer is about past performance not guaranteeing future results still apply, but in my opinion, it's good to continue negotiations with this potential development partner. There are still more details to come, and I've always taken the position that I'll try to get as much information as possible before making a decision. But at this point, I'm supporting continued negotiations.
Further discussion. Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. Just pulling up some of the original vision articulated and some staff memos regarding the transit corridors. And one of the things that it says is it's to support redevelopment and infill development to realize mixed-use developments and achieve mixed-use corridors that support and sustain transit service. It also talks about creating a pedestrian-friendly design for all transit users of any mode. And I guess my question is, at what point is the transit system sustained by development in TC1? At what point do we start to realize the tax benefit to sustain the service from these kinds of developments if we're locked in for the next 30 years of putting the money elsewhere? So, again, that's my biggest sticking point at this point.
Further discussion. I'll be voting yes on this. I am excited about the prospect of 1,000 new units, 1,500 perhaps, new Ann Arborites. I'm excited about the prospect of over 200 affordable units, a monumental change and improvement to affordable housing in the community. I'm excited about the prospects of hundreds of jobs, new jobs at the site, and excited about the prospect of initiating a new residential center in our community. These are incredibly attractive benefits from the proposal. It's been, it is of course not coming without any city participation or city support. But for my part, I would urge caution when it comes to talking about this in the context of public investment, using public funds, and so forth. The project will of course be financed by TIF funds. These TIF funds are tax-icaman financing, taxes that come from the developer to pay for the lot, income from the parking structures to pay for the bonds used to purchase the parking structure. Ann Arbor's existing taxpayers, you, me, our money is not going into pay for these bonds. Now, the entire community is of course ultimately backing up these instruments. And so, it's incredibly important that we have done to date and that we continue to do a great deal of diligence, a great deal of stress testing on these projects. But we are not using existing tax dollars for this purpose. These tax dollars are going to be the tax dollars paid into the kitty by the developer for the bonds associated with their project. That's a crucial way, that is a crucial understanding that members of the public need to have. It is, I think, fair to say that this is public participation. I caution at the concept of it being, I think it's important that we make it very clear when we talk about whether these are public funds or public investment, that this is not existing tax dollars being used for the purpose, that these are new tax dollars that never would exist but for the development, and that they are coming entirely from the Further discussion. Councilmember Briggs.
Our third-party consultant's report was brought up. And I think it's important to note that the consultant that we hired to conduct a financial review of the proposed project also noted some things of importance in it and asked us some questions. It fundamentally asked, you know, is it a city priority to support economic development via the provision of financing to encourage the southside redevelopment within TC1? You know, is public financing needed to have economic development in TC1? Are we saying that for all future projects in all of these TC1 corridors that we have just approved and said that we want to continue to support, that we need this public financing? I don't think we've had them in place long enough. I don't think that that's been a tested model. My answer would be no, at least not to this level. It's only needed to realize this project. So, and then finally, it also notes that these structures present a financial risk to the city. We're having a work session next week to learn more about the bonds, to learn more about the special development district. Again, I believe that it's important that we ask these questions, have more time to ask, you know, get some answers. I see the direction this is going, but I'm going to ask for, to have, for an amendment to strike two items from the resolution in front of us tonight, anticipating that they could be brought back, which is the second and third resolved clauses in the current resolution in front of us, the one to bring back the multi-phased bond issuances and the direction of moving forward a special assessment district, my sense is. So, we can discuss more in a second.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Cornell. Councilmember Briggs, you stole the floor.
Yes. So, you know, my take is that there's clearly support around this table to continue with negotiations around this project. I would suggest that we wait until after having a work session where folks can actually ask some more questions and understand, you know, what is in this brownfield plan. I think there's a number of questions that have been raised on the brownfield committee itself, and exactly how much will this special assessment district actually protect us? I think there are some questions that we have outlined. So, I would just ask that we strike those before moving forward with asking the administrator to bring everything back to us.
For my part, I'm going to vote against these proposed amendments. I appreciate that and share the view that we will need to review these questions in the event that they do come back to us with a great deal of scrutiny. However, you know, we can, we will, I believe as a group, engage in that diligence, engage in that scrutiny at the time when the questions come back to us, to ask the administrator for another vote to bring back to us. This is already, I think, a multi-vote process for something which is typically not a multi-vote process. We are already asking the administrator to move forward to negotiate, to bring something back to us, which often comes back to us in the ordinary course through the brownfield committee without these prior votes. We have a vote here, we're asking for negotiation, the ordinary processes will continue, the questions, either the brownfield and then the special assessment districts will come back to us in due course. We'll vote them up or down at that time. That seems to me to be efficient. Adding what is implied second vote in between, to my eye, doesn't value add. Further discussion. Councilmember Cornell.
I have a question, but I don't know who to ask.
Throw it out there.
Throw it out there.
See what happens.
And what, I guess just for setting expectations, can, maybe Mr. DeHoney, it's you, but can you give us, like, this is what you can expect, this is the order, will the bond issuance come to us before a development plan, an agreement? Like, can you help us understand what our next steps will? Because these are really big buckets that I don't understand, so.
In fairly short order, you will have the brownfield plan. There is no scenario, no scenario where a bond issuance would come to you before a development In practical terms, you're probably a year or two out from an actual bond issuance. So, the development plan has to go through county, has to go through here, planning commissions weighing in. At some point, council will have to say yes or no to individual bond issuances at the time that they're needed. The real purpose of the communication that we've been doing and what we're trying to do with this particular resolution is be completely transparent. This is a huge deal, there's going to be multiple points along the way, and we're trying to telegraph that. The other thing is, a bond issuance itself is an awful lot of work internally and externally, which we're excited to do at the time that it's necessary. But one of the underlying purposes for the resolution is if councils already decided you're not going to want to do it, we were simply asking, then tell us that now, then we wouldn't do all that work. But if we're open to continuing on, then we're prepared and happy to do that. But the development agreement and the brownfield plan would be two documents that you would be getting, certainly before there'd ever be a bond issuance brought to you.
I know there's a lot of confusion in the public as well, so I appreciate you taking a minute to describe that. Thank you.
Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. And I think it's exactly what you just stated that gives me pause about doing this, bundling this all together. It is significant work for city staff to go on to this next stage of issuing bonds. And I know that I have some questions about this. I believe others do as well. And before we authorize the administrator and instruct the administrator to take these next steps, it seems like we should all be really confident that doing this work is what we want to see. And I think we should want to understand what is in that development agreement, what actually is a proposal, because right now, what we have is a concept. What do you know about this project besides what has sort of been telegraphed to us? There is not a plan yet. So, I'd love to see that before having us, our city, go this next step.
Councilmember Watson.
I agree with Councilmember Briggs that there's not a plan. And I think, you know, some of my comments before, I was sort of saying broadly that it's, you know, it is okay for municipalities to take on risk in the form of bonds, and you know, it's okay to have questions about the TIF plans and the county finance authority plans, you know, and here is our brownfield authority. I have a question, well, I think maybe this question should be saved for the work session, but I think the special assessment district, I mean, that's giving the city some assurances on the risk. And so, I guess I'll be voting against this amendment because, you know, I want the city to investigate everything, including the special assessment district that could mitigate some of the risk. You know, let's talk more about that at the work session, but yeah, I'll just be voting no.
Mr. Delacorte, it's been suggested to me that there's wisdom waiting.
I don't know about that, Mr. Mayor, but I will do my best to add some little bit of clarity, just to make sure. Currently, when we talk about plans and processes, the site plan is scheduled for the April 15 Planning Commission meeting. So, that plan will be in front of the Planning Commission, and it is complete. We are putting it there a little sooner than we normally do in anticipation of there being a lot of questions, but it is close at this point to being technically compliant. The brownfield plan final version is with the county, the staff reports are being written, and the reimbursement agreement is being drafted by the city council members. That is scheduled tentatively for May 5. And currently, on the schedule for the project, the first bond issuance, we're looking at a September date, working backwards from that to keep the project on schedule. So, I just wanted to add a little more specificity, that there are both a final brownfield plan and a final site plan currently being reviewed and scheduled for formal approvals, and that the bond issuance, although more flexible, is the timeframe we're working back from right now is a September issuance. So, that does conflate that timeframe a little bit compared to what I was just hearing a few minutes ago.
Councilmember Malik.
Mr. Delacorte, is that September 2025?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, the bond issuance, again, is dependent on a lot more things, but that is the timeframe we're working back from. I just didn't want that to be what staff was talking about and not have that be brought out at this meeting as far as the current timeframe for starting.
Further discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Gazie Edwin.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
On the amendment.
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Ayer?
No.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
No.
Councilmember Harrison?
No.
Councilmember Watson?
No.
Councilmember Malick?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Motion fails.
Further discussion of the main motion? Roll call vote, please, starting with the main motion, starting with Councilmember Gazieadwin.
Yes.
Councilmember Gazieadwin?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
No.
Councilmember Briggs?
No.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malick?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
DC 2, Resolution to Approve Amendments to the Council Rules. Move by. Councilmember Redina, seconded by Councilmember Gazieadwin. Discussion, please, of DC 2. Councilmember Ayer?
Yes, just a, just a brief overview of these rule changes. They deal with two different portions of our rules. One, it seeks to give us an option that did not previously exist for postponing an item when we don't have a date certain that we want to postpone it to. And because that option did not exist in the rules, we were, the council across the years has defaulted to tabling, which is not really correct, because under Robert's rules, tabling does not allow for discussion, and it can be, not that anyone did that here, but it can be abused in order to kill an issue with no discussion whatsoever. So, we worked with our indomitable city attorney to come up with language that allows us to postpone something indefinitely and creates some rules and guidelines around how to bring something back. The other thing that these rule changes address relate to council expenses, and these changes seek to clarify the roles of city staff and council when it comes to expenses and reporting and rule following, and who oversees them and who approves them. And I think they strengthen the ethics surrounding them, and really clarify that it's on council members to make sure that we are following campaign finance laws, and that we are following the rules with the ethics rules related to expenses. And, yeah, I hope my colleagues will support these changes.
Further discussion? All favor? Opposed? It is approved. DC 3, Resolution to Align City Operations with Vision Zero and 2030 VMT Reduction Targets. Move by. Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Ackman. Discussion, please, of DC 3. Councilmember Ackman?
Wanted to say a few words about what this is about. So, the city, as we know, has made commitments to two urgent goals. We talk about Vision Zero a lot at this table. I think we talk a lot less about reduction in vehicle miles traveled, which we aim to cut 50% by 2030. As noted in this resolution, that would mean that right now we would be at 50, sorry, 561 million, when we're actually at 1.1 billion. So, we're not on track. And as was already noted earlier in the meeting from public commenters, we have failed to meet our 2025 goal of Vision Zero, zero serious crashes and deaths on our city's roads. So, what this is, you know, I want to be very clear that this is not intended to be another performative, you know, statement of our commitment to these goals. What it's really meant to do is to align these operationally. And I think there are several examples, there are several examples where we are doing this, so I want to give credit where credit is due. You know, we had two recent projects, one on the agenda tonight that we approved for Nixon Road, that's integrating facilities to slow down cars, to provide safe and comfortable options for people on bikes. But there are also examples that we can cite where we haven't really been putting these first and foremost. So, in short, this asks us to, asks the administrator to integrate Vision Zero and our VMT goals into departmental work plans, to make sure that we explicitly explain how each project that touches transit supports these goals, that we align our annual budget to meet these targets, and that we engage with institutional partners such as U of M and the Ann Arbor Public School District to develop shared strategies on these goals. Luckily, we do have some of the same, you know, climate goals as well as safety goals. So, that's a bit about that.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yeah, thank you. This is, I mean, it, it can seem somewhat perplexing. I know folks raised it in public comment, right? Why do we have a resolved clause that has our commitment to a goal that we're clearly not meeting in it? And it's something we're going to have to discuss as a city. What does it mean when we're not meeting a goal that we've really centered is, is critical? It's embedded in our transportation plan, it's embedded in our climate work, our climate goals depend on this. And so, I think that's something that Transportation Commission and Council will need to take up in, in terms of some of this work. But I'm going to remain, you know, committed to the fact that this is, this is work that we need to be centering. And the reality is, it's getting more challenging, right? We, we can see we don't have the federal support for this. And so, what does that mean for our budgets, knowing that we don't have a federal partner to be able to move this forward? It's going to have some budgetary impacts if we're, if we're serious about moving these projects forward, and we're going to have to think about that. And the final resolved clause is particularly important. We've seen an issue that has become front and center for our community around the site plan development of Ann Arbor Public Schools. And we try to, you know, keep, keep those, we respect those boundaries of different institutional partners. But some of the decisions that they made were because we don't necessarily have consistent direction from within the city organization towards our institutional partners, right? When we ask everybody, when we ask our institutional partners, we ask Ann Arbor Public Schools to remove all of car traffic off of our street grid, that facilitates them needing to really develop different types of campuses, right? So, that has had implications, and will be ones that we're, we're going to probably have to grapple with at the council table later on. But we want to make sure that we are engaging our institutional partners consistently with these values centered, recognizing that, you know, across different institutions, there's going to be a lot of different issues that come up over time. And, you know, we want, we want our kids walking and biking safely to school. So, anyway, there's a lot that can be said about this, but our hope is that we continue to, to think about ways to identify why is it that we haven't met this goal yet? It's, it's a, it's a big goal, it's a challenging one. But there's more work, work that we can be doing on this.
Further discussion? Councilmember Redina?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And I appreciate Councilmember Briggs acknowledging that I think there's a lot of conversation that we still need to have at the table about these goals and, and how we're implementing them, particularly as we're discussing our Vision Zero goals that, that we are failing to meet. I also want to specifically point out, you know, I think we've talked, we talk, we do talk a lot, I feel, about our vehicle miles traveled goal, and particularly as it relates to the, our, our goal for carbon neutrality. And I think there are a few things I just want to acknowledge as we continue to have these conversations moving forward. And one is that, you know, I think there is maybe some value in having a conversation about the difference between combustion engine vehicle miles traveled and electric vehicle miles traveled, and as it relates to, to carbon neutrality in particular, I, I think that's important to note, because I think we've had a number of discussions about the fact that people in, in Michigan and Ann Arbor are continuing to drive, and talking about the ways that we can continue to support a transition to, to an EV culture as opposed to a traditional car culture. I think that one of the other things that, that I think we're going to continue to struggle with around this particular goal is that we need support from the region and from the state in order to, to truly accomplish this. It's not something we're going to be able to accomplish as a city alone. We don't have effective regional transit. We don't have enough investment from the state in, in alternatives that would allow for people to, to give up their vehicles. And so, you know, I'm, I'm going to, I think this is something we do need to continue to talk about, but I think the reality that we need to acknowledge is that, you know, I think we're also potentially setting ourselves up to not meet this goal. And so, I think we need to have realistic conversations about what that means, particularly as it relates to A20.
Further discussion? All favor? I'm sorry. Councilmember Briggs?
You know, I can't stop talking about transportation. Sorry. It's a lot on this agenda. And I, you know, it's a, these are ambitious goals, right? It is difficult for our community to, we are challenging ourselves to do ambitious things, and to allow our community to live in ways that improve their quality of life, improve their health, improve the environment, improve the safety of, of, of our community. And each of these goals is tied to that. So, there's just a multitude of ways that I think that these are important. Improve equity, transportation's the second biggest cost in people's household budgets. People of color and vulnerable are the most likely to die in car crashes in the United States. So, it's, you know, there's a whole bunch of different reasons we come at this work, a whole bunch of different angles. And we've centered a couple of those ones in these resolutions. But there's no shortage of reasons that we should be doing this work and be committed to it, and figuring out how to build a city that works for our, works, works for our community really well in 50 years.
Further discussion? Councilmember Gazieadwin?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think that this resolution has, it specifies really important things that we could and should be doing. You know, one thing that I want to note, because we passed this ourselves, is I didn't see a financial analysis attached with this, and I want to know if, I guess this is for you, city administrator, Mr. DeHoney, the anticipated costs with some of the directives in this resolution?
I don't know that I could give you a direct answer, just sitting here, but we reviewed the resolution, staff participated in some of the edits, and we're comfortable with what the resolution says is the best way I can answer you right now.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to speak a bit more to budget and why we specifically call out for the annual budget to explicitly support some of these goals, is I think, you know, we understand that we have a limited amount of resources, and that we're always deciding how to deploy them. And as Councilmember Briggs said, we can probably expect that we're going to have less of those going forward, at least less federal support. But I think it hasn't always been, you know, if you take a deep dive into our transportation-related and roads budget, it's quite complicated with several different threads of funding and where they can be allocated. And I don't think it's always easy as a policymaker to tell where there's opportunity, and we're just not putting dollars towards it to meet our goals, or if we need to make some tough explicit decisions. And so, I think that's also what this is asking. You know, that's part of my intent behind this, is to better surface those decisions, so that we can make a conscious decision about what we're doing and how we're deploying resources, instead of kind of being surprised when we don't meet our goals.
Further discussion?
You know, I have a, just a quick follow-up question. Councilmember Ackman, I appreciate you pointing out the budget, and just the need to really align our budget with our proposed, with our goals and our values. I think that, you know, as we enter this, this budget cycle, and we know that there's just so many competing priorities, we're losing grants, and organizations are in crisis, when the resolution, the second to last resolved clause says, directs the city administrator to align annual budget proposals to explicitly reflect and support the Vision Zero Plan and VMT Reduction, I, I, this is a question again for you, Mr. DeHoney. Do you have any estimate in regards to what proportion of that, of the budget may be affected by that? In your mind, is there a pot that could be used for this? Just so we have a better idea.
No, there's no specific pot, because the funding for this comes from multiple areas. So, being able to determine, you know, what we're going to propose to be allocated, I can't give you that answer tonight. Obviously, council has the ultimate say over the way the budget is approved. I might be able to talk more specifically about it on the 21st, but I can't do that this evening.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All favor? All opposed? It is approved. We just have one more, let's pound through. DC 5, Resolution Regarding the Comprehensive Use Plan in Low-Rise Residential Density. Move by. Just a little nothing. Councilmember, moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion? Councilmember Dish?
Sorry, there's, there's confusion here. But anyway, so, this resolution aims to set the upcoming round of public engagement on the foundation provided by over a year of public engagement to date. Understand that when a city makes an update to its comprehensive land use plan, an update that is not only legal, but that cities are actually required to do by state law, the only required public engagement is a 63-day period that occurs near the end of the process. We have been conducting public, staff has been conducting public education for over a year now. And it will pick up again this summer. And we will eventually, in the end of August, which I don't even want to think about, because I'm so cold now, I don't want August to ever end, that 63-day period will begin only then. So, we will have had mountains of public engagement. And I want to focus on about 500 people who are part of the 4,000 total who have engaged so far. Those 500 people came to in-person meetings and responded to questions about acceptable density in low-rise residential neighborhoods. And their answers consistently were that they would be happy to see three-story development, and that they actually, though initially they were interested in talking about unit limits, ultimately they came to the conclusion that they didn't really care so much about how many units were in a place, they cared about how well it fit in their neighborhoods. This is a great organic emerging consensus. It does not represent the city, it's not supposed to. It was supposed to provide a basis for the engagement on the draft plan. But we were having, we were hearing reports, we heard one tonight, about the contents of that draft plan, spoken as if people had read it when the draft plan has not yet been released. So, I am puzzled by claims about what it contains. Those claims were extremely misrepresentative, attributing to the comprehensive land use powers it does not have to waive city requirements for storm water management, for example. And this has not at all allowed the engagement that we have spent so much time and money on to feed organically into a second wave of engagement. And that is why this resolution is here, because we want to affirm something that came out of this engagement that is a rare and unique thing, which is a community saying, yes, we would like to have, we would like to see an increase in density throughout the city. And this is what would work for us in low-rise residential. And in other places, there hasn't been that kind of agreement, that in fact, yes, throughout the city, we would accept increased residential. And even in Minneapolis, which is touted as an example, and it is in many ways, those commitments to increased density were fought and rolled back at the zoning phase, so that they have a 2.5-story height limit and FAR restrictions that make the things that they're zoning...
Councilmember?
Sorry. I'll come back to that sentence.
Councilmember Ayer?
Thank you. So, I've, I've heard from many residents, I know we all have, about the comprehensive land use plan update, some who thinks that the direction so far goes too far, and others who feel it doesn't go far enough. And here's where And here's where I stand and why this moment matters. First, it's important to note that the land use plan is not a zoning change. It's a long-term roadmap for how we want our city to grow. It doesn't rezone anything by itself. That comes later. And by state law, we're supposed to update the land use plan every five to 10 years. Ours hasn't been updated since 2009. That's 16 years of inaction, while housing prices soared, our diversity declined, and people who belong in Ann Arbor, people of color, teachers, nurses, and service workers were priced out. This update is long overdue, and we have a moral responsibility to do better. Since my first campaign in 2020, I've been clear that I support ending exclusionary zoning and allowing duplexes and triplexes in residential neighborhoods within the same building scale, generally, that we already allow. I often said if we allow Bigfoot million-dollar homes to be built for one family, we should allow homes of the same size that could house two or three families. That kind of gentle density can help make our community more inclusive, more sustainable, and more affordable, though not just for those who would like to live here, but for current residents as we age and we need to downsize, or as our kids grow up and look for housing nearby. All that said, it's important to keep in mind that when it comes to big housing gains, TC1, the expansion of downtown, and the new mixed-use districts are where we will actually see new housing, new housing in numbers that will make a dent in our housing crisis. Low-rise residential is a very long-term strategy. To the process, public engagement has been extensive, and it's all been over and above what's required by law. Thousands of residents have participated so far, and what we've heard so far shows support for allowing up to fourplexes in single-family neighborhoods as part of a broader strategy to open up more housing. But the engagement is far from over. Once the draft plan is finalized, there will be more engagement sessions, that 63-day public comment period, and public hearings at both Planning Commission and City Council. There will be many more chances to weigh in before anything is adopted. And once that plan is in place, any future zoning changes will still go through their own detailed public process, where we'll talk about lot sizes, height, parking setbacks, and how new housing fits into each neighborhood. So this plan is a critical step towards a more inclusive, sustainable future, and we need a new plan that reflects our values and goals. But we also need one that has enough support to actually be implemented when we get to the zoning phase. So it's critical that we navigate how to move this plan forward in a way that builds and maintains public trust. And that's why I sponsored this, co-sponsored this resolution, and I hope my colleagues will support it.
Councilmember Cornell.
I don't understand why we're doing this now when there hasn't been a draft plan released. And so, to me, it does feel very reactionary to some of the louder voices that we're hearing, some of whom, if you do a quick Google search, you will find have opposed every rezoning effort since like 2008. So not surprising to hear, there's, and I haven't changed it, I appreciate consistency, but not in this regard. I would feel comfortable supporting this if we had something to react to, but the way that this is being brought forward, I feel like is if we're acknowledging that City Council does not draft the land use plan, but we're also instructing Planning Commission to put restrictions on what doesn't even exist yet. It feels out of turn. I really would feel comfortable if we had a plan in front of us that we were reacting to versus just what to me feels like a really gross look, that the loudest voices are going to silence all of the public input that we've heard. And I understand that we want to compromise and find something that works for everybody. I just don't think we're there yet. So I would, I would be more comfortable if we waited, if we postponed this until after we actually have a draft plan versus reacting to our perceived consensus of what really is, is not, has not played out, I think, in a way that indicates this is necessary at this moment.
Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you. I want to start by saying that I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the way that people are approaching this. I know that we're all hearing from a lot of people, but I do think we need to respect the process that's already underway. As I believe everybody that's spoken so far has noted, public input in the engagement is ongoing. It hasn't ended. We don't even have a draft plan. So for council to step in now and lock in a specific outcome, like a 35-foot height limit, seems really premature. And I would also note that, you know, I do think this is reacting to a certain narrative that's been in our community, but there's a lot there that we're all, you know, we're not reacting to. Zero setbacks. Do we want to get into setback specifics now? I mean, I don't think that we do. So I think this is kind of undermining the role of, of the Planning Commission, the months of engagement that we've already asked the community to participate in, the tens, dozens of emails I've sent to people saying public engagement is not over, welcome, you know, we want to hear your input, please, the draft isn't out yet. I'm also just concerned about setting this arbitrary cap on height. I mean, I agree, I think that we are going to have to have a conversation about scale that fits within existing neighborhoods. I, I fully support that direction, but I, 35 feet? I don't know. Is it 35 feet? Is it three stories? Is it four stories? I have no idea at this point. So I think scale's important. Height alone doesn't capture that. You know, I've also heard a lot of people cite Minneapolis, saying that only 1% of new housing came from low-density zones, and I think that's exactly the point. Legalizing more housing types doesn't lead to overnight transformation, but it does give options for homeowners, renters, and developers alike. And that's what we need. We need more flexibility, not fear. And so I don't want to act on fear. I think, yeah, let's listen, let's, let's get the draft out there. Let's do the work. As people have said, we're going to have to do the hard work of the zoning anyway. So even if we supposedly settle this 35 feet, we're going to have this discussion all over again. So I'm voting no.
Councilmember Briggs.
I wanted to thank the, the folks who brought this forward. I understand where this is coming from. I understand that it's a desire to be responsive to the, to the emails that we've received, and there's, we've received a lot, and I think we can acknowledge that they haven't necessarily been consistent, right? But they have, they've leaned a certain direction, right? And so there's a desire to reset back to a conversation that was existing last fall. And as much as, you know, that conversation was happening last fall, probably falls, you know, is pretty consistent with my own personal beliefs, the reality is our, the community is, is having a very different conversation right now. And honestly, that's, well, it's not factual, and it's distorted, and there's a lot of things that we wish that it was, it was occurring differently. It's pretty exciting. Folks are finally engaged in our, in our comprehensive land use planning process. And so we had a bunch of folks, 4,000 people who've already engaged, that's incredible, and now we have more. And this is our opportunity to continue to educate them on the process. And so I say this a little bit, you know, I obviously served on Planning Commission a couple of times. Many of you know that I, I really like process, right? I bring it up a lot. We don't have a draft plan yet. I think it's really appropriate that we would, I think there might be a time where we need to provide some direction to Planning Commission. But I think this is a little bit premature. We are, I would suggest that we postpone this, we wait, we see what the plan says. We have some, we have some sense of what's, you know, planning staff has already given us some hints about what's coming. But planning commissioners have also asked, given us some hints of what's coming. They have asked for some time to look at the plan and reflect on public comment and reflect upon the public contact in the context of the plan. And so we have this body that we've charged with doing this work for us. Let's them, let's let them do their jobs. And, you know, there's, there may be a point that we want to weigh in, and there may be some other points that we want to weigh in with, but let's do that in the context of additional information.
Councilmember Redina.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I campaigned for City Council promising to address our city's longstanding housing crisis, particularly for the low and middle-income families who increase, who increasingly find themselves priced out of Ann Arbor. In order to fulfill this promise and foster more inclusive, vibrant, affordable, and sustainable community, I believe we must embrace gentle growth throughout our city and commit to ending restrictive and exclusionary zoning practices, the restrictive and exclusionary zoning practices of the past. Currently, over half of Ann Arbor's developable land, developable land is restricted by outdated zoning laws that prohibit meaningful multifamily housing. This reality not only limits our housing supply, but also elevates prices, which has made it difficult, if not impossible, for low and middle-income families to find homes. This economic exclusion is neither just nor acceptable, and has resulted in, in the Ann Arbor area becoming one of the most economically segregated in the country. The comprehensive planning process presents us with an opportunity to make a visionary statement about the, about future growth that can guide our city in a better, more progressive direction while also maintaining unique, livable, and close-knit neighborhoods. Through extensive public engagement, the city has already gathered feedback from thousands of residents, and a clear community consensus has started to emerge in support of a three-story multifamily housing in proposed low-rise residential areas citywide. This consensus not only supports eliminating restrictive and exclusionary zoning, but it also presents Ann Arbor with an opportunity that other cities rarely have, to draft, to draft a progressive and inclusive comprehensive plan that envisions the possibility of diverse multifamily housing options in every part of our city to realistically confront our housing shortfall and to do so with broad public support. Through public engagement to date, residents have indicated they are ready for change, ready to embrace the gentle growth of new housing, of new housing types throughout Ann Arbor. I believe that shifting from the previously suggested three stories that has been the focus of most public engagement to date to suddenly potentially four stories, we risk an erosion of that public support and trust. With great respect for our planning process and our planning commissioners, I believe it is imperative that Ann Arbor sees on this moment and this momentum to integrate more homes and families into our existing neighborhoods and to do so in a way that respects and acknowledges the widespread community feedback we've received to date. That's why I'm supporting this resolution.
Councilmember Watson.
At its core, this resolution asks council to affirm the public engagement done on our comprehensive plan, conveying a request to the Planning Commission to hew to conclusions from, from that engagement by recommending three stories and 35-feet height, and providing potential tools for implementation of the plan through zoning via form-based code. The start of the planning process was an expression of city values, namely that in Ann Arbor, we strive to be more affordable, equitable, sustainable, and dynamic. In developing the comprehensive plan and implementing it through zoning, we are seeking tools to reach that goal. I myself spoke about gentle density while knocking doors in 2022. Over the last year, engagement on this plan has shown broad community support for increasing density in single-family areas. Council to this point hasn't spoken on this engagement. I think if we were to postpone, it would appear as a more direct response to the drafts rather than, rather than what I view as ratifying the engagement that has been done. If you told me, you know, five or 10 years ago, that Ann Arbor would have received 70% support for increased density in, in these areas after 4,000 in-person and online survey responses, I would have been really surprised. I think this is something that, that we should uplift and ratify in a way. I reviewed the April 1st Planning Commission meeting, and really I had to watch it twice to kind of understand it. It is a fair point that height limits are usually considered to be a part of zoning rather than the comprehensive plan, but the fact remains that staff presented a summary of public engagement that included a 35-foot height limit. Some municipalities, including nearby Plymouth and Northville, as a planning commissioner brought up, include height in their plan. During the same meeting, staff mentioned that four stories and 48 feet is in the current draft, which again, hasn't been released to Planning Commissioner Council. That was just spoken by planning staffers. So at some point, the city will have to discuss height, and in this resolution, we specify 35 feet. Personally, I would have liked the 35 feet to be more of a for example than a hard limit, but after discussing, after discussion with my co-sponsors, I decided I could live with specifying 35 feet. I wouldn't support the three-story and 35-foot request to Planning Commission if I thought it would kneecap the plan. We know that in Minnesota, only 1% of new duplexes and triplexes built in the wake of zoning reform were built in formerly single-family areas. So the difference between three and four stories, I think will have a minor difference in how many new people we can welcome into our city. And a note in defense of the city's planning commissioners, I very much appreciated a Planning Commissioner's comment last Monday that they are deliberating an official bowl. In Ann Arbor, we ask our residents to consider big ideas with long-term consequences in public and on video, and to serve on the commissions uncompensated. Planning Commission also has very strict recusal standards and conflict of interest disclosures in its bylaws. For those who want to impugn the motives of planning commissioners, criticize their employers, or say that a body appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council can't be responsive to public feedback, I would caution against this line of criticism because it would, could be applied to any of our city commissions.
Councilmember? Okay. Further discussion? Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Everyone is being so thoughtful, as usual. So why are we talking numbers? At some point during the engagement process, the comprehensive land use plan team introduced numbers into the mix. They did, as several people have noted, start talking about 35 feet and three stories to reassure people that we were not planning to plant a 10-story high-rise next door in currently single-family zones. And literally, that's one thing that people were worried about. So why are we talking about this now? I am glad that we have more people engaged in the comp plan process. I'm glad they are showing up, but they are showing up primed for suspicion, pretty convinced that they've fallen victim to a bait and switch because we were talking 35 feet and people on the planning commission, myself included loud and clearly, said that wasn't enough, and we thought 48 would be better. Moreover, they are having a debate that I believe will make it difficult to build the kind of coalition, a coalition of the reasonable, that we will need to get this plan approved and implemented through zoning changes. So I am not responding to the objections that, that people who will never be convinced to add density to residential neighborhoods, I'm not responding to their objections. I am trying to fight back against what they are doing to my debate, my debate as a member of the Planning Commission. I think it needs a reset. I think I need to make it clear that I heard what the community was saying, that I regret my statements that were not open to their voices, and that launches this next phase of public engagement with a clear demonstration that we are not a unified fist, putting our fist on the scales. I'm running out of my metaphors, so I should stop now.
Councilmember Cornell.
I, with respect, I feel like this is exactly that, that we're putting our fist on the I, I think I know how this will go, but I would still like to make a motion to postpone this until the draft plan comes to, comes before, is made public.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion? Yes, that's interesting. That's to, I assume it's the next council meeting after the release of the draft.
Correct. Oh, yeah, we just voted, we have to say that.
Isn't that exciting? Woo-hoo! So sage a council that has a provision of this nature, something else. Councilmember Cornell, you still have the floor with respect to postponement.
I would really like to be reacting to something other than a very thoughtful, yet undeniable perception of what consensus means.
Further discussion on postponement? For my part, I'm going to vote against the postponement. We can talk more about, I'll talk more about the merits of this particular resolution now, but I think part of the merits of this, of this resolution is its timeliness. Councilmember Briggs then Ackman. Ackman then Briggs. Delighted to hear from you both in whatever order you choose.
I appreciate the motivation to postpone it, but I guess I'm a little uncertain when we should postpone it, too. I mean, the draft's going to be released, then there's going to be at least four public engagement sessions at the library. I assume there's going to be other means to provide public input, so I don't know. Again, I'm, I don't feel like I have a time in mind where I would, would want it to come back, so I think I'm going to vote against it.
Councilmember Briggs.
I would be inclined, if we were postponing this, to not do it to the next meeting after the plan. I think my inclination in terms of supporting a postponement would be to allow a conversation to exist in the context of that first draft and to weigh back in potentially in the, in the second draft if we need to, to provide the second draft if we need to, to provide direction into that. You know, I think that this is, I understand the desire to do this now. It is, it is specifying with certainty one element, but I think this room demonstrates something tonight. It's very different than what existed in the Planning Commission meeting last week, which was packed, right? We had limited public comment, nobody was in support of this resolution. And we know that the conversations that are existing in the public sphere are suggesting, you know, some are suggesting that we should halt this process entirely. I understand the desire to reset and sort of frame it back in the context of how planning staff was doing that. And honestly, I think that there's, at some point, there may, may need to be some, some feedback from us, as, as the elected body before planning staff actually finalizes this plan. But I, I don't, I don't think that this is, I don't anticipate this is going to do what the sponsors here hope it's going to do. I think it's going to just move the ball, right? There's just going to be a new request, and I don't, I don't anticipate this working the way you hope.
Further discussion, postponement? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Gazie Edwin.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Ayer?
No.
Councilmember Ackman?
No.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yep.
Councilmember Dish?
No.
Councilmember Harrison?
No.
Councilmember Watson?
No.
Councilmember Malick?
No.
Councilmember Adina?
No.
Motion fails.
Further discussion, the main motion. Hold on for a second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just to finish up that lineup that I was saying last time.
Oh, yes, thank you. It's all you.
Oh, did I? Oh, okay, whatever, I'm sorry. You've heard, you've heard a lot about the engagement over and above the state-manded common period, so I just wanted to say a word about state-manded common periods that I learned when I was on Parks Commission, which created a comprehensive five-year PROS plan, Parks, Recreation, and Open Spaces, for stewarding park resources, which, while different than land use, makes our city more attractive to residents and visitors, and can still confer benefits to certain neighborhoods, certain parts of the city. So I looked back at my notes from the most recent drafting of the PROS plan that was presented in 2023, and it came with a six-page memo containing resident comments and changes in the draft that were made as a result. These changes were, you know, all made during that 60-day-ish, or maybe 30-day there, public notice period that resembles the one that will begin in August for the land use plan. So I think it's just truly unfair to say that this plan is a done deal, because the city has shown time and again that it incorporates feedback from public engagement.
Further discussion?
You know, we have a great thing going on here in Ann Arbor, and, you know, I love our town, and, and, you know, we all do, too. But the status quo does not work for everyone, and people who work here often can't afford to live here, and people who live here often can't afford to stay. And that, and housing cost, which is the result of supply and demand, is at the center of this challenge. Supply has been kept low for decades. We all want Ann Arbor to be affordable, sustainable, and equitable. If we can, we want to stabilize prices, welcome new, diverse neighbors, particularly middle-income earners, and the only way to do this is to increase housing supply. Much of this increase should and will be downtown and on transit corridors, and some will be in detached home neighborhoods, integrated into the existing context. Our goal during the entirety of our process is to find a balance. It's to find a balance honoring the place that we love today, which is going, evolving into a city that works for everyone. As we know at this table, and as many in the public, I hope, are learning, the Comprehensive Use Plan is extremely different from zoning. It is a policy statement of general principles and goals, and guides the zoning rules and regulations. In other words, the Comprehensive Use Plan does not engage the specific context of each neighborhood, zoning does. Of course, you all know here at this table and in the public that the Comprehensive Use Plan and the zoning ordinance originate with the Planning Commission, which is a board of community members who help administer and develop land use policy. The City Council, and this, we are able to eventually amend zoning ordinances, but we cannot amend the Comprehensive Use Plan. It's their document, we just voted up or down. It is, I think, appropriate that we do make comment on the plan in process. We are not instructing anybody to do anything in this context, and I think that's something important. The, the resolution very mindfully speaks in terms of requests. It speaks also in terms of the, the public engagement, the consensus to date. That consensus is only to date. It is on, the evaluation of that consensus is always ongoing. Members of the public continue to speak up to both us and Planning Commission and staff, and that's all right and proper. But nevertheless, we set a marker for where we are today, and I think that's appropriate. And I think it's appropriate because this is, in some respects, this isn't, this is indeed a response to the nature of the public conversation. Planning Commission, as articulated in the resolution, entertained 48 feet, which was a novel introduction, to my understanding. That's not something that was generated from the broader community as a whole. It's, it's my hope that this resolution recalibrates the conversation, enables us to, to accomplish ultimately a consensus to, to work to make housing in our city work for everyone. And that's, that's what we hope to do today. Further discussion?
Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Gazie Edwin.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
No.
Councilmember Briggs?
No.
Councilmember Cornell?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malick?
Yes.
Councilmember Adina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have the pleasure of a closed session today?
No, thank you, Mayor.
We have before, the Clerk's report of communications, petitions, and referrals. May I motion please to approve the Clerk's report. Move by, Councilmember Dish. Second by, Councilmember Adina. Discussion, on favor, opposed, it's approved. Do you have communication today from our city attorney?
Happy birthday, I see you. That's it.
Woo-hoo. In the absence of public comment overflow, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please, move by, Councilmember Cornell. Second by, Councilmember Dish. Discussion, on favor, opposed, we're adjourned. Well, how far is it?